If I could ask everyone to please make sure your phones are silenced. The City of Villa Park City Council welcomes you to this meeting and encourages your participation. Regular city council meetings are always held on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM. To speak on any item of the agenda, complete a speaker's card located in the back. They're blue, I believe. Each of the, enter the item's agenda number on your speaker card and give it to the city clerk. When speaking, please face the city council. State your name and address for the record.
Can they see us?
And I will call on you.
They can see them, but we can't hear them.
Oh. Uh-oh.
Councilman Robbie.
Can we, can we ask the guys in the back?
So if you scroll to the right on that, that there is the City of Villa Park one now shows.
Sorry, there's always some technical difficulties.
And now it shows the rest of the dials.
I guess they can see us but can't hear us. Yeah, so let me just let them know.
Everybody on Zoom, we can hear you, just so you know, so.
They can't hear us.
Well, they can't hear us.
It's very, very quiet.
Very, very quiet. I'm very quiet. That's a new one.
We hear you.
I didn't say that that was a good thing. I just said that you were quiet.
Right? Do you know sign language? Can you hear us? Now I'm calling him. Or maybe I didn't have my speaker on? How's that? Can you, can, can you hear me now? How about now? How about now? Now you're muted, I think. Can you hear me?
Ah, yes. Can you guys hear?
Okay, I'm gonna hang up.
Better.
Yeah.
Can you?
That's better.
Ray, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I, I can hear you.
Is it too faint?
Um.
Wouldn't hurt to turn it up a little bit if they can.
Yeah.
Is it something they can turn up?
I can turn up the volume on my side and hear you pretty well. And if that's the volume that you guys are gonna be at, then that's easy enough to do.
Okay, maybe tonight, we just have to really make sure we speak in, in our microphones. And for those in the audience, if you're speaking on an item, please make sure you are loud and clear. So is that, is that okay?
That works.
Okay. So for the record, just, Councilperson Pitts and Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman are going to be Zooming. Steve, well, before we call the roll, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we do the pledge, I would like to ask, and again, this is, this is optional, and I would hope that we, as a community, would, would do this. Of course, you can do it in your own manner, but to just give a thought and a prayer to what's going on in Afghanistan and in hopes of our troops coming home safely, and Americans, and any of the Afghanistan individuals that are seeking refuge with the United States. So please just keep them in their thoughts, and let's make sure that we always say a prayer in our own way for our military overseas and, and hope that they stay safe. So with that, if you would please rise, place your hand over your heart. Face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Steve, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Miles?
Present.
Hey, all okay.
At this time, I think we are going to start with our Neighborhood Watch presentation. And so Wayne and Mary Szelzell, I think I saw you here, would you like to come up and address the individual that you would like to address?
We're Wayne and Mary Szelzell, coordinators of Villa Park Neighborhood Watch. It was a very successful 2021 National Night Out here at the Civic Center last month. On behalf of Neighborhood Watch, we want to especially thank Orange County Sheriff's Department for the presence of their deputies, the equipment, canines, and everyone who helped. We want to thank Orange County Fire Authority for equipment and firefighters who participated. The City of Villa Park, especially Mike for setup, and Steve Franks for our coordination, and the Villa Park Community Organizations and Town Center Merchants for participation, games, and swag. There was a great turnout of residents and families, many with young children, some of them new to Villa Park. This gave them a fun way to meet our deputies and get acquainted with our fine city. We obtained new participants in the almost 200-member Villa Park Neighborhood Watch Network and in the Do Not Solicit program, both of which contribute to the security of our community. We also were able to distribute educational material provided by FTC about scams, fraud, and internet security, safety for all ages. This was particularly important because the social media site next door canceled Villa Park's Neighborhood Watch program some time ago, which was prohibiting the FTC postings. So this has limited our distribution of the important information to residents. We're now looking forward to partnering with the city and Orange County Sheriff's Department to present the annual Home Security Fair to continue to advance these projects. Each year, the goal of National Night Out is to bring community members of all ages together to celebrate the outstanding safety record of Villa Park and to thank those who make it possible, especially by promoting respect and appreciation for the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement with the young children and young people who attend. With that goal in mind, we always encourage them to sign at National Night Out a poster thanking the sheriff's deputies and to show their appreciation for their dedication here in our city. It's our privilege and pleasure to present this symbol of Villa Park's appreciation to Orange County Sheriff's Department for its dedicated and outstanding service to the residents of the City of Villa Park.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wayne and Mary, would you mind if Alyssa took a picture of you with the sheriff so that we could put it in our feeder?
No problem.
It is so fun to watch the children do that.
And Wayne and Mary, thank you so much for your time and dedication to this, and it's such a, a great part of our community.
Thank you. We appreciate being here for 48 years now. I wanted to add a couple.
Well, thoughts here. You know, we aren't really certain when we started Neighborhood Watch. We know it's over 20 years. And we also thank the, the city for giving us a recognition on 2007 for this. And it's been a fun project, but I have to admit that it's become successful because of Mary. Mary writes a Neighborhood Watch newsletter each month, and the list of, continues to grow of people who are anxious to receive it. We're gonna focus on scamming and the thieves that seem to prey on older people who feel that since they grew up within more honest community, they feel like most people should be trusted. Unfortunately, those days are gone, so we all have to be on edge. I wanted to say also that we had a, had a, had a great time with the kids this year. There are more young people in the community than we've seen in the past at this, this event. I think it's because the, the dogs that were here, the sniffer dogs and the attack dogs and, and then they, we saw the kids taking pic, their pictures taken. They were inside the animal, dog catcher truck. They were getting into the compartments and their parents were taking pictures of them. I thought, that's a pretty good place for some young people. Any rate, thank you for the honor. I wanted, wanted to also add that in 19, or 2017, we had 55 members on the, that were members of Neighborhood Watch. We were pretty officious in those days, and we wanted to train everyone and their neighbors. Well, we didn't get the coverage because a lot of people were too busy with that, and so we took a different tack and became more informal and said, look, just get the newsletters, and when you run across the neighbors, explain to them if you see anything that looks a little out of line or even looks strange, call our deputy. They'll be right there to check it out for you instead of trying to guess yourself. And don't wait till you come back from the store. Call right then. And it's interesting because now we have over 200 members, and about three years ago, we started seeing a decline in our crime rate. And the reason was because we were, got a reputation in Villa Park for keeping your eye out. And also, big credit to the, to the Sheriff's Department, which has almost an infinite amount of, of protection available to us within minutes. So if something happens in Villa Park, the bad guys have gotten the news. Don't do it in Villa Park. And so as a result, Yorba Linda and Villa Park have the lowest crime rate for the past five years of any of the 34 cities in the county.
That's fantastic.
With our deep setbacks, no streetlights, the challenge to the deputies, we're very pleased. So thank you Villa Park citizens for doing that.
So Wayne, if I could ask for those that are listening, and maybe those in our gallery, can you tell people how they can sign up to be part of the Neighborhood Watch and how they can get Mary's wonderful newsletters?
Well, I can assure you that Villa Park City Hall will gladly jot it down and give Mary a call. They might even call me. But Mary's the right one to call.
Okay.
So any rate, just call City Hall and tell us you'd like to sign up for the, these newsletters. And they're also full of interesting information, too, so. But we don't, we don't opinionate. We simply report to you what the Sheriff's Department reports and what FTC reports.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you both. Okay, I see that Supervisor Wagner has, has joined us. Special, he has a special announcement to make, and so I'm gonna go ahead and.
We may want to introduce item number, item number seven.
Right, so I'm gonna go ahead and from the consent calendar and pull item number seven. So in the interest of time, Supervisor Wagner can go ahead and comment on this. This is consent item number seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Villa Park endorsing the construction of a veteran cemetery in Orange County. The recommendation is that the City Council adopt resolution number 2021-3521. And welcome Supervisor Wagner.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much, and I apologize for jumping the line or, or otherwise. Running late, honestly, I had a little bit of grandpa duty tonight, which kinda, kinda kept me, but I don't apologize for that. I do, however, very much appreciate, number one, you bringing this item forward, and number two, the opportunity to address it. It is showing support for the veteran cemetery, and we in Orange County have a unique opportunity. There has been an effort, it's a decade-plus-long to bring a veteran cemetery to Orange County for lots of reasons. It hasn't happened in the city of Irvine. Long before I got on the Board of Supervisors, the county deeded land in Gypsum Canyon in Anaheim Hills for a cemetery, for in particular, a veteran cemetery. And the time has come to realize on that grant from the Board of Supervisors, and more importantly, the momentum that has developed throughout the veterans' community, saying, this is the time, that is the place, let's get it done. I know you have my good friend Bobby McDonald here, my appointee to the Veterans Committee. He is speaking on behalf of dozens of veterans organizations that have contacted me and that have been working with me for quite some time. We have a number of other cities here in Orange County that are supportive. We have a $20 million budget item from the county to do what's necessary to get the process started, build some of the infrastructure, and ultimately, and sooner than we're gonna be able to do in any other site, get to the veterans, the cemetery that they have been asking for and that we all recognize they deserve. The closest place for any of the 130-plus thousand veterans in Orange County to be buried is out in Riverside, or you can go down to San Diego. It's time for something here, that something is the site in Gypsum Canyon, that something is the cemetery that we've long promised to our veterans. And I urge passage of this resolution. I thank you, Madam Mayor, for taking it up. And I know all of you have been helpful in, in various ways in this fight. This is the time for all of us to come together, say thank you to the veterans, and give to the county the cemetery the veterans so richly deserve. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I appreciate your time and your, your hearing this and importantly, bringing it forward.
Thank you.
And if anyone has any questions, happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Wagner. I know that this has been on your, your to-do goal list for a very long time, and I'm just so proud that, that we are able to help achieve your goal, so thank you.
It is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there's any public comment. Mr. McDonald? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable city council members. Thank you very kindly for doing this and allowing the, the resolution to, to be put on the council tonight. Thank you for hopefully passing it, making it work. And, you know, I, I had a prepared speech. Again, Bobby McDonald, a veteran, Vietnam veteran, I went twice. I was there in 67 and 68. And as Supervisor Wagner just stated, I represent quite a number of VFWs and DAVs and all the other groups. But, you know, as I was sitting out here before the meeting and we, you and I had a conversation, I thought about history, and I'm kinda deep into history. And I'm gonna take you kind of, well, shortly, but back maybe about seven, eight years ago, when, when Todd Spitzer was the third district supervisor, and I was his representative at that time, too, he gave me a call and said that he just received some land from Donald Brenn, and he told me to do something that's very, very hard. He told me to keep my mouth shut. And, well, I'm, I have, I'm, I'm out there. But anyway, the bottom line and where I'm going with the stories, we had a meeting with about seven of the mayors that he had called for a meeting, and guess where it was? Right there at Rockwells. So this process started right here in Villa Park. All right, so I, I thought that was pretty historic because most people would never know that. We did make the paper with it, but be, be that as it may, thank you all for, for this. Really deeply appreciate it, and I know the veterans, thank you. And God bless you for doing this.
Thank you.
You helped a veteran today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any comment on this? Anybody on Zoom? Should I, can I read the resolution or should we vote first?
Let's vote.
Vote first, okay. Can you please record your vote?
We need a motion in a second.
I would be honored to make a motion in support of this.
And second by Councilman Colacott? Please record your vote.
Well, no, we actually gotta vote verbally because we're on Zoom today.
Yep, all right. Please call the roll.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Mayor Miles?
Hundred percent yes.
Passes 5-0.
So if I may, I'd like to read the resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Villa Park endorsing the construction of a veteran cemetery in Orange County, whereas the Villa Park City Council wholeheartedly endorses building a veteran cemetery in Orange County, and the county of Orange has allocated over 200 acres of county-owned land located at Gypsum Canyon near the intersection of 91 Freeway and 241 Toll Road in Anaheim Hills. And whereas the City of Villa Park has a rich history of supporting the military and the former Marine Corps Air Station, Tustin, and El Toro Marine Corps Air Station. And whereas to honor and respect the men and women who served our country and who deserve the right to be buried in Orange County, we ask federal, state, and local governments to closely consider this proposed project as a benefit, not only to Orange County, but to the region as well. And whereas the Villa Park City Council would like to support the planning and developing of a site that would ultimately fulfill the promise made to Orange County veterans. And whereas the property at Gypsum Canyon has been deeded to the Orange County Cemetery District by the county of Orange for the purpose of building a veteran cemetery. And whereas the property's breathtaking view of the rolling hills remind many of Arlington Cemetery, and we can bring historical pieces from the former Marine Corps Air Station, Tustin, and El Toro Marine Corps Air Station, which closed in 1999, to the veteran cemetery located in Anaheim Hills. And whereas on July 1st, 2021, numerous leaders representing veteran organizations gathered at the proposed Orange County Veteran Cemetery site in Anaheim Hills and expressed their enthusiastic support for this location. Now therefore be it resolved that the Villa Park City Council does hereby support the Orange County Veteran Cemetery in Anaheim Hills and further encourages federal, state, and local governments to support this much-needed project. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will go back to the beginning. We're gonna, please have Captain Knutson give us our Orange County Sheriff's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Our July 2021 report, put my glasses on here. One of the things we want to talk about to kinda piggyback on what Wayne mentioned was scamming, so we mentioned for our analysis and concerns, the Orange County Sheriff's Department has noticed a concern with card skimming devices at ATM machines. We would like to remind the community to be mindful when using ATMs at gas stations and drive-through banks. Always trust your instincts and be aware of your surroundings. If you suspect that there is a skimming device at an ATM you're using, report it to the manager immediately. Be aware of non-bank ATMs and inspect the card reader in area near the PIN pad before using. When entering your PIN, cover the keyboard with other, with your other hand to block it from cameras. Always use machines in secure areas, monitor your account regularly, and sign up for fraud And you'll see down in our first section for criminal incidents, that first incident there on the 19th was a card reader right here at the Bank of America in the shopping center parking lot. So that's why we touched on this. It obviously is something that happened here close to home for us. We want people to be aware that it does happen and be cautious when using ATM machines. For the month, we responded to a total of 337 calls, and like I mentioned, one of those was the card skimming device. We also responded to a grand theft report on Wanda and Villa Park Road where a very expensive bicycle was stolen from outside the shopping center here. On July 11th, in the 17,000 Block of Santiago, a wallet was stolen from the purse, purse from the Ralph's parking lot again. And this type of crime, this is pretty much a crime of opportunity, so we wanna make sure that we're hiding our personal belongings, our valuables, we're not leaving them in plain view for someone to come by and just either smash our window out or take them from the vehicle. On the 22nd, on the 18,000 Block of Windsor, there was a garage door, looks to be a, kinda like maybe a juvenile prank where some eggs were thrown at the house. Doesn't seem to have done any permanent damage, but we want to make sure those things don't happen and do permanent damage. And then we did have four incidents this past month for narcotics violations, which happens occasionally over here. I don't have any specific reason for the uptick, maybe astute deputies in the area and happened to do traffic stops and locate subjects with narcotics or paraphernalia in their car for using narcotics. And those would have been on the 23rd at Center and Villa Park Road, the 25th right here on Santiago, 17,000 Block of Santiago, 27th on Villa Park and Center, and the 31st on Lemon and Villa Park Road. So that would go back to, like Wayne was speaking of earlier, if you see something out of place or strange, say something. Call us if you think someone's in their vehicle using narcotics, we can come and investigate it. And then in our traffic department, we issued a total of five parking citations. And in our moving traffic citations, our patrol deputy issued 27, and our motor enforcement deputy issued 27 also for 54 traffic violations. And then on our report, we have a flyer that goes over basically some of the information I had there to avoid card skimming, a little graphic there that kinda touches on those things, so if you can review that. I know Wayne and Mary post this on their Neighborhood Watch, which we really appreciate because it does reach a lot of people. And that concludes my report. You have any questions?
Any questions?
I do. On those four narcotic or narcotic paraphernalia situations or citations, probably not arrest thanks to Proposition 47 and 57, day, night, do we have any specifics whatsoever on that?
I think most of them were in the afternoon, early evening.
Okay. Yeah. That's something that I think we all need to pay particular interest to. Four is very much out of the ordinary, may indicate a trend, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I have a question also regarding the, the narcotics one specifically, the one on July 31st, that, and maybe you, you guys probably know this, I don't, but the possession of controlled substance slash sale, is it because, sale because there was a certain quantity or you actually caught somebody trying to sell it?
Well, it could have been one or the other. This particular one, I think it was more related to the quantity that they had. We would, we would refer to that as more to like a personal amount that you're using, so either a larger quantity or maybe the narcotics that they have is packaged individually, so it's like prepared for sale, so, and there could have been some other factors, too, that would have led the deputies to think that they're actually selling narcotics. I don't particularly think that they were selling narcotics here, I just think they were traveling through and got pulled over, and then through the deputy's investigation, they determined that, hey, they have narcotics and they're in the process of either delivering it somewhere or meeting a potential buyer at some point.
And then could you please speak to, I know we all had our, our first week of school, and our city is very unique that we have so many schools in such a short radius, so could you speak to how that went from a traffic standpoint?
Yeah, I think in regards to that, we definitely had some impacted roads near the schools. A lot of traffic in the areas around the elementary school, the middle school. Those roads are a little narrower, so we wanna remind people to please be careful, drive slowly. One of the big things is stay on the right side of the road. We had a few residents who were reporting vehicles driving on the wrong side of the road because the traffic lane was backed up for people turning into the parking lot. And I know it's frustrating when you have to wait and traffic's not moving, but the bigger picture is, is you have a lot of little kids walking around, and sometimes they run across the street unexpectedly, and then if you're traveling on the wrong side of the street, you may not see them, and then we don't want a traffic accident. So we have to be patient, we have to plan ahead, leave early whenever possible, and obey the traffic laws when you're out there.
Well, I know, we appreciate your presence. And then to speak on the scamming that both Wayne and Mary spoke about, and then, you know, you have as well, in the report for the seniors' Citizen Advisory Council, I'll be doing something on the scamming for seniors as well, so it sounds like it's a common theme.
Yeah, it's, it's very prevalent in, in our area, unfortunately, in Orange County.
Yep.
Mayor, if I could add something here real quick, the, the captain and I have talked about some of the school situations, and we will be, you will be seeing some increased deputy presence during those hours. and we will be, you will be seeing some increased deputy presence during those hours in hopes that we get compliance. These are, these are traffic violations. These are not something that, you know, it's, it's people clearly cutting across and doing a U-turn illegally or wrong side of the street or things like that. But, but the captain and I are thinking that he's going to make a focused effort with his deputies over the next couple of weeks to see if we can't improve the compliance with the laws. So just before, Warren, I just wanted to let you know that you'll see some deputies out there in the morning a little more aggressively than you might have in the past.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it is too, parents are rusty at the drop-off routine.
That's a good point, yeah. Because there was a whole year that we didn't drop off, so.
Yeah.
But still, you know, there is common sense, so let's hope everyone has some.
You mean the vehicle code?
Yeah. So, all right, anybody else?
A quick question.
Yes.
Steve brought it up. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. For the Serrano in particular, in other words, discussion about a crossing guard, is that something you have any follow-up on?
Yes, Councilman, one of the issues that we, I've, I've talked to some of the residents, and we've sort of agreed, the issues we're seeing are really not related to crossing guards. They're related to illegal traffic moves. So people driving on the wrong side of the street, those kinds of things can't be addressed by a crossing guard. So we need to have a law enforcement presence and see where that takes us. You'll see out on that crosswalk, we've made a number of adjustments. We've, the council has increased the, the field of vision by expanding the red zone for parking. We put up signs in the middle of the median for the crosswalk. We put up little blips in the street, I forget what they're called. The markers along the crosswalk so they can be more visible. And that street is pretty much marked pretty well. So I think the, the key right now is, is, and if you see the pictures and if you, having experienced it going out several times this week, it is clearly a matter of people driving without regard to the law. It is not in essence, necessarily an issue of, of a crosswalk because we don't see that happening. We need to, we need to address the problems like the captain suggested first.
I agree. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we discussed that. And what I was thinking in terms of a crossing guard, that person was somebody official or if there was somebody standing there letting people know, hey, we're writing tickets, that, that would be the thing that's.
Well, we'll, we'll see, you'll see a black and white out there with a deputy in, in his green uniform. And I think that will send a rocler message.
Councilman Holcott.
Yes, one maneuver that the drivers are not rusty at is making U-turns. In that short stretch of Serrano Avenue, there are eight no-U-turn signs. It's not like it's a deep dark secret, you're not supposed to make a U-turn. But they do it quite, quite regularly, and it's very dangerous to, particularly to pedestrians. Most of the pedestrians are going to be young children. So since it's not a secret, I hope that the sheriff deputies can be very aggressive and make it abundantly clear through actual violations that, yeah, that that's not to be tolerated any further.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you for the deputy's proactive traffic stops that led to those four different narcotic-related incidents, as well as their enforcement of the traffic laws so far. And obviously the enhanced enforcement that we're speaking of. Well done to one and all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, yes, we should. Steve, can you mention anything? I know just for those that don't know, you did reach out to the schools and, and kind of what you, the conversation you had with them.
Yeah, I reached out, and the school district is, sends out weekly email blasts to their students, parents, et cetera. They'll be coming out with a thing, because we've had, we've had reported incidences at all of our schools. It isn't just isolated to the one. We have Villa Park Elementary and Untaft Avenue for the high school. So they'll be sending out reminders for parents, protocol for drop-off, don't drop off in the middle of, stopping in the middle of the street, and those kinds of things, which believe it or not, may make common sense like you and me. But if you go out and see it, you can take five minutes and you see two people doing it, you know? It doesn't take long to see it. So the, the school district is, the principals are going to be sending out something very aggressively. Hopefully that makes a difference. All of them, all of them have said the same thing to me. It's, it's been a while since some of these parents have driven their kids to school. So hopefully we can drive home the fact that when they do start doing it again, they need to do it the right way.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Chief Hunter, Orange County Fire Authority. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Since our last meeting in July, the Orange County Fire Authority was dispatched to 28 incidents in the City of Villa Park. Of significance, we had a vegetation fire that was contained to some bushes along the side of the roadway. Throughout the state of California, as many of you know, most of these fires are in Northern California, the north of us. The one closest to us is in Kern. The Orange County Fire Authority has numerous resources out as far north as Oregon, helping to assist in mediating these fires. We do have a strike team that's been out for over 14 days, helping out with the Dixie Fire. And we've since relieved the crew on the line and put a new fresh crew out there. We're looking to continue to assist our agencies, as well as the other counties in Northern California. But at the same time, we do have some anticipated weather coming in this week to be prepared here in Orange County. Next month, as you know, is National Disaster Preparedness Month. The Orange County Fire Authority encourages everyone to be prepared for unexpected events, disasters, and take the necessary steps to protect you, as well as your family, for the next earthquake, wildfire, pandemic, or disaster. The first step is make a family disaster plan. Set up a plan when you do evacuate your house to where you know where to meet everybody. Make sure you have plenty of exits and make sure that you practice your plan. One of the important things is visit alertoc.com. That's Orange County's Emergency Notification Center system to actually notify you and provide information on any incidents that may be close to you or any emergencies that are occurring. Enroll in some safety classes, CERT, first aid, as well as CPR training. Create emergency supply kits. Those are for medical, as well as food, to last you for three to 10 days. And prepare your home. Make sure your home is prepared with securing TVs, furniture, as well as computer equipment. Identify and have the proper tools to shut off your gas and water, electricity if necessary. We have a lot more information on ocfa.org, and you can also visit Two-in-One Orange County, and that's available to you 24 hours a day. The biggest thing, just like as firefighters, we prepare for all types of incidents and disasters, making sure that you're prepared and spend time in advance planning. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or anything? I have a question, actually. The alertoc.com, is that, that's different than the SMS things that we get on our phone? Like if there's, you know, an emergency or something, right? Or is it the same thing?
No, it, it, there's different systems that are set up. So the Alert OC is going to send you a text message, as well as an email, depending on how you sign up. One of the most important parts of that that we realized with the recent wildfires that we had out in the Silverado community, as well as Yorba Linda, is a lot of people have since moved to different parts, whether you moved out of Yorba Linda or those areas that were impacted, or into those areas. They didn't update their information, so it couldn't tie into your location. So they weren't getting these notifications. And when we did the research to figure out why, it's because they didn't update their information. So I'd recommend that you update your information regardless of if you moved or got a new phone number or a new cell phone carrier, just to make sure that it's on there and you can do that online as well.
And that will give you updates, like if there's a fire in your area, where are the nearest, you know, who's evacuating or who's under voluntary, right?
Yes, that's going to give you the updates, early notification of the incident that's close to where you may live, as well as instructions for evacuation notices and warnings, as well as throughout the incident, what the incident is doing and the other areas it may be impacted and affected.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, nobody? Okay. All right, well, appreciate you. Moving on, at this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on an off-agenda item unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Steve, do we have any public comment that is in, not on the agenda?
Yes, we have five speaker forms.
Okay, who's first?
Okay, and I'm going to, Mr. Alam, and I'm going to let him pronounce his last name. He told me, but, so I don't want to mispronounce it. Anyway, he's up first.
Good evening, welcome. If you'd please state your name and your address.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm glad to be here and I was looking forward to being here. My name is Alam Sadegi. This is my wife, Mitra.
Welcome.
We've been here in, we live, living in Villa Park for 30 years, and we have absolutely loved this place. My daughter was born here, she's 29 years old. And so we love it here, and so far we haven't had any problems, except for the last month and a half, we really have been, I can't say, I can't say we've been annoyed. We've been really tortured by the rooster noise from our neighbor. It is just like an alarm clock. You can't unplug, you can't turn off. It starts at 5:30 in the morning and it happens. I have recorded it, if you would like to listen to it.
No, thank you.
Every nine to 15 seconds, it goes. And they used to have three roosters, but maybe it is, it was, became to two. But it is hard for me to believe that people are not considered, considered of their neighbors. And I, we tried, and I wrote a letter addressing to you, and I asked it to be distributed among council members. Because I, I talk about it as, compared it to as a barking dog, but it really is more than a barking dog because of the repetition. It is just like something that you can't escape from. It happens at five in the morning, it repeats every 15 seconds. And then for an hour or two, and then in different intervals during the whole day till like 7 o'clock at night. And it is hard for me to believe that somebody for the enjoyment of himself and the grandchildren can bring this kind of torture on a neighbor. We complain, complain, and complain, and the reason we are here, because when we called the city, my wife calls four times. She came here, talked to Bill, the inspector, and he came here. Although everybody agrees with us and is sympathetic to our case, but everybody says we don't have any ordinance that is enforceable, so we can put an end to it. We are here to ask you, to plead to you, please do something about this. Because it is difficult to be at your own home Saturday morning, Sunday morning, during the day, and not be, not be at peace. And this rooster, it just, being a rooster, I can't blame the rooster, but the owner just starts early 7 o'clock and is relentless.
And to be honest with you, when I, I talk to anybody, I mean, even at first, I was laughing so hard because the rooster was crowing about like 4:30 in the morning. And with whoever I talk to, my friend or even people in here, they start laughing. And believe me, as, I mean, I want to laugh about it too, but try to, you know, it's still, you know, just 4:30 in the morning. And I do have a headache. I do have a migraine headache. I'm taking shots for it. I'm taking medication for it, a bad one. I mean, and that triggered me every single morning. And it goes away all the, and I get, you know, my headache started, it started at 4:30. Even when I close the windows and the doors, it's still the, the, you know, the crowing is coming through the windows. And it's hard, it's really hard. They are actually now, they are taking care of the rooster, but I don't know how long it's going to be like that, because they still have the chicken in there. And depend if the next hatch is going to be another rooster. So do I have to go there and start talking to the guy about his new rooster? Because every time they have a new rooster, there, there is a beginning of the, you know?
We hate confronting our neighbors because we've known many of them for years. And on a situation like that, when nobody listens to you, you feel desperate. Because there is, usually you think there is a law, there is an ordinance or something to come to your help. But when you talk to everybody, for a small city like Villa Park, not to have an ordinance on the book that can help us out and bring peace and solace to us, we are here to ask you guys, please do something about it.
Mr. and Mrs. Solomon?
Sadegi.
Sadegi. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker is Kathy Tracy.
Hi, I'm.
Welcome.
I didn't get to meet you last time because you were ill.
Yes, I was.
Yeah, so, hi, everybody. This, this is Kathy. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I have to lower this down quite a bit. Okay, I'm Kathy Tracy. I live at 18361 Churchill Lane. And it's my privilege to represent and my concern for my neighbors on Churchill Lane and Squire Circle. I actually stated my case at last meet, last month in July. And I do have pictures that I circulated, but you weren't able to see.
That's okay. I, I saw the meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And my main concern is the safety of our streets. It's very dangerous. And I'm retired nurse, and so safety, an ounce of prevention goes a long way. And so anyway, my, just to say one thing is I know there's, the, the city took steps to do the next step, and that was to spray the weeds that were cropping up through the cracked aggregate, I guess you can say. And I feel that's a steep, a step in the right direction, but still no cigar. Because how soon we are on the list or whatever. I got the list of everything, and it's like trying to read, you know, hieroglyphics a little bit, you know? But I want to know what is the exact process? How long do we have to wait? And, you know, I know that most of the people on the city council already have their streets paved already. So I want to know how they got that paved right away and, and the process to get that going. Because we have a lot of young kids that still live on our street, and they're, they're trying to ride their scooters, and we have no sidewalks. And so, you know, it's just, there's a lot of divots and all kinds of stuff just going on on Squire Circle. And even when they did try to repair those areas, there's cracks coming off of those repair things that are pretty deep and everything. So, and, and in front of every neighbor's house where they pull out of their driveway, it's just getting worse and worse. And so, you know, we also have, a lot of our neighbors have dogs, and then our neighbors too. And I'm worried about someone getting hurt, you know? And I think that is a liability for the city too, because that's not our property, you know? So we can't do anything about that. But anyway, I do have a lot of my neighbors here that are supporting us because they feel the same way as I do. And so I welcome the city council to come over to my house and to look at what I'm talking about. You know, I'm welcome everybody to see, even the neighbors here that don't know exactly. Just take a spin on cir, off of Center, Churchill, and Squire Circle right there. So I noticed a lot of the streets got done. So I know when I walk my granddoggie, we see all the pretty streets that are done. And ours just looks like an eyesore, you know? And I don't, I live in Villa Park, and I, I want everybody's streets to look nice. And so, you know, I know there's money restrictions, but, you know, I mean, there's certain things that need to come in play, and safety first is, I think is super one should be on the top of the list. We don't want any of our seniors, and I'm a senior, so I don't want to be the one, one of the ones falling down and getting hurt. So thank you for hearing me. I just want everybody to be safe in Villa Park, you know? So thank you so much for your time.
So would you mind if I took your, your number, and I would take you up on your offer?
Yes, please. 714-501-5856.
Great, thank you very much for your comments.
And you got my address, right, too? 18361?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Thank you for your comments. Steve, who's next?
Nyla Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. I'm here on behalf of Villa Park Dodson Way. I hear people here have the same problem we do. Our street is horrible. My husband probably complained five or six years ago, they put a Band-Aid on it. I actually walked the street with a video today just to show the deterioration. We really, really need the paving, and we know that the council members' streets were paved. So we're, we're asking for some relief there. And the other thing is on Dodson Way, we've lived there since 1975. The traffic is horrible. I tried to get out of my, we have three doors in, and tried to get out of the driveway. People are not parking, but they're lined up in the street. You cannot get through. It took me 15 minutes to go from the three doors down to the signal. It took me 15 minutes to go from the three doors down to the signal. And my concern is most of us, a lot of us on the street are seniors. And if there's a medical emergency, we're going to be in a lot of trouble because there's no way that they can get in and out. So I'm asking for relief there as well. It's, it, there, it just has to be some kind of, of help there to get the, the traffic relieved for us, especially on Dodson. And I understand that some of the other streets are impacted as well. But I have, I walk every morning. I see people double parked, parked on the wrong side of the road. I saw one at the corner where Nichols and Serrano make a U-turn right there in that. It's not safe. It's just not safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And as mentioned, I believe our sheriff is going to be much more aggressive with all that. So hopefully there is some relief from that. And I do believe that as far as some of the streets, there are, you know, there's a process by which the council approves different streets based on many things. And it is a, a, a very detailed process. And so when we get the pavement index grading scale versus how much money and whatnot. So I don't believe that, from my own comments here, unfortunately, because our city is so small, it may appear that, that council person's streets are getting paved above others. But I got to tell you, when you have a certain radius of, of a, of a city and we're only two square miles, the odds are you're going to have a city council person. I know for Santiago, that whole entire street which I live on was done, not because I was on council, but because of the gas line that was done. So whether I was on council or not, but I do understand the perception may, may appear that way. It is the council that does approve which streets get proved. And I do believe that, you know, we are hearing more vocalization about the streets. So when the next project comes up, I do believe that some of us will be more mindful.
Take a look. Just walk the street.
I've been on Dodson. You're, you're absolutely right. I've been on Dodson, Dodson, so.
Like I say, they just put a Band-Aid on it when my husband complained years ago and it's deteriorating.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. They're duly noted.
Could I add something?
Yes. And, and, and for, you know, the two of you are going to have to kind of yell out if you want because I'm not going to see you unless I'm purposely looking up. So please don't, don't worry about yelling out.
So I just wanted to say that when our streets do come up for paving or for the option, we recuse ourselves. We're not part of that decision for ourselves. So it isn't something that we're lobbying or we're encouraging. It really is just pure science. It's the formula that determines where those are. Now that I've heard it mentioned by several people about council members getting their streets paved, like that is clearly not something that we decide on or that we're lobbying for or gunning for. If it were up to me, I would rather my street not be paved in favor of other streets being paved. I'm a volunteer here on city council. I'm not here to, for my own benefit. I'm here for the rest of the city and I just want to make sure that's really clear.
Thank you. Okay. Next, please.
Next speaker is Mary Beth Felsen.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Felsen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I live at 9622 Feather Hill Drive in Villa Park. My first comment is about the parking. If you're going to identify some problem areas, we have a little circle, Parkway, I believe it's called, on Feather Hill. We have cars parked all around it and at the end. And that makes the, the street very narrow as you approach Serrano. It's a danger area. So maybe we could paint all that red and prevent parking.
Yeah, you're specifically talking about the Center Islands.
Center Island.
Yes, okay.
Well, Parkway sounds greater, doesn't it?
Yes.
All right. My second reason for being here tonight is at the July city council meeting, I pretty much demanded an apology from Councilman Pitts for falsely accusing me of submitting, of participating in the submission of falsified election documents in the 2018 city council election. Statement was made at the May city council meeting and in the July, and in the July century. Councilman Pitts, I guess you wanted a big audience. As I said at the last meeting, all these claims about falsified documents, not following proper procedures, were soundly rejected by the city attorney, the county registrar of voters, and the Orange County Superior Court in 2018. Every claim, and there were a lot of them, was rejected in an 11-page court judgment with all the supporting case law cited. After my speech, I walked outside and several residents told me they were very confused by your statement, Councilman Pitts, but they thanked me for explaining that the accusation was bogus and for facing up to the situation and demanding an apology. One month has passed and I haven't heard anything about an apology. I'm still waiting for you to retract your statement and apologize. Now, why am I here? You may think this is not important. It's just one person complaining. Councilman Pitts, you're going to be on the council for two more years after this, end of this cycle. And the Villa Park residents want you to appreciate that you can't slander residents and other city council members just because you disagree with them or you don't like them or they live on a street that you don't like. We want you to vote and speak in the interests of our city for the very best of Villa Park. And we know you will. So please don't do this. There's still time to submit a comment card. You have time this evening, so why don't you come down and apologize? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment, please. Can you hear me?
Did you have a comment?
I do, please.
It's a public comment, so yeah.
So this is, if you can see me or not.
Councilman's, just speak up.
I want to speak on behalf. I was in that court trial. I was present for the, the full proceedings. And I did want to just clarify, there was a section where Bob Colacott falsified a document. He admitted to it in open court. He said, I did this, I guess I did that. Because he signed a document when he was in the wrong place. What Councilmember Pitts stated is correct. It is a true statement. It is something that happened that Bob Colacott admitted to. We should be able to put it behind us. It's something that happened. I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I have the next speaker, please?
Tom Nixon.
You may want to stay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Could you please state your name?
Will do that. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Tom Nixon. I'm a resident on Lincoln Circle. I have no connection with any of the city council members. I believe I was once introduced in passing to Councilmember Pitts, but that's the extent of it. And I don't know this lady right over here who just spoke. At the beginning of the May 25 city council meeting, Councilmember Pitts, you read a statement of complaint about other city council members and then left the meeting. That was at least the second time that you have walked out of a city council meeting. I believe that a city council member has a responsibility to the voters and to the community to participate in each city council meeting for which he or she is available. Each time you've walked out of a city council meeting, you have abandoned that responsibility. It doesn't matter if you are right or wrong on the issues leading to your walking out. Your responsibility is to be here at the council meetings and participate. If you're unwilling to fulfill that commitment, you should step down. In your statement of complaint, you said that you recently worked with a group producing a paper on the qualities that make a great city council member. As I recall, when you ran in 2016, you campaigned on a platform of acting in a professional manner and being a unifying force on the city council. Presumably you believe those are qualities that a great city councilman would have. In your statement, you objected to a litany of actions by Mayor Miles, which even as you described them, seemed to be nothing more than minor exercises of discretion to facilitate city council meetings and city business. Even if there were transgressions, they were very minor in comparison to the level of outrage you expressed. You also implied that because you endorsed Mayor Miles' candidacy, she should be handling things as you want them to be handled. I suggest that a great city council member understands that not everything will go their way. By accusing Mayor Miles of, and I quote, "displaying a double set of standards and departure from proper meeting protocols simply to exert her position," you have almost certainly undermined your ability to work effectively with Mayor Miles in the future. That does not strike me as an approach of a great city council member. You also asserted, as was just noted, that three years ago, Councilmember Colacott failed to follow the required election procedures in filing for reelection. Three years ago, a court ruled in favor of Councilmember Colacott. Nothing you say now will change that result, yet you continue to rehash the issue. In your May 25 statements, you spoke repeatedly about our community values. I hope that one of those values is recognizing the rule of law. And the law has spoken on the election issue. How is it now professional and a unifying force on the city council to raise these issues three years later when they were rejected by the court? To my mind, it does not look professional. It does not look unifying. It simply looks bitter. As a final note on the issue of community values, several of your comments in your May 25 statement, if not true, may be considered defamatory. Making these statements during the city council meeting appears to be a clever way of being able to obtain immunity from liability for making potentially defamatory statements. While your approach may be a slick one from a legal standpoint, I would hope that using city council meetings as a way of making potentially defamatory statements is not a community value. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another public speaker?
That's all the speaker forms I have.
Okay. Then we will go on with our first public hearing. Number one, waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. The recommendation is a motion to waive the reading in full of all ordinances, resolutions, and meeting minutes on the agenda and direct the city clerk to read by title only. Can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the item we put on regularly to help conduct more efficient and timely city council meetings. As you said, it's to waive the reading, reading in full of all the comments. So with that, we'd recommend approval and we're available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Can you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Second public hearing is variance number 2021-0318512, Rosenow Drive. And recommendation is city council either approve or deny variance number 2021-03. Can you please give the staff report?
Mayor, may I? I would like to recuse myself. The contractor and I are friends and given that, out of, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. We'll give a moment for Councilman Colacott to step down. Thank you, sir. Can you please give the staff report?
Yes, please. This is an item that was continued from the last agenda, last month's agenda, at the request of the, of the property owner. Ray Pasqua is our planning manager and he's here to make the presentation. Just to give you a little heads up, he's under, a little bit under the weather right now. So if he has to excuse himself to, for a moment, just bear with us for a minute and we'll get through this. So Ray, do you want to give it a shot?
We can't hear you.
You're on mute, Ray?
You're on mute.
Yeah, you there?
Can you hear me out?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as noted, the item before you tonight for your consideration is a variance request that is related to 18512, Rosenow Drive, located in the E. Forzoni District. Variance number 2021-03 involves an ADU with an attached one-car garage, which are currently in the construction. And the focus of the application is a request for approval to reduce the 30-foot front yard setback to 20 feet 6 inches, which is a deviation of 9 feet 6 inches for the one-car garage. The 9-foot 6-inch encroachment was not discovered until the one-car garage and ADU were in framing stages of construction. In the staff report, I provided the sequence of events that have taken place to date based on city records and conversations I had with the city building inspector and with the property owners' project team that led up to the situation that the project is currently in. So after the plans were reviewed, approved, and building permits were issued and before any site work began, the project team wanted to make certain that they knew where the rear property line was. It was around this time that the city building inspector recommended to the project team to have a survey performed to ascertain the location of the rear property line, which was done. The property owner immediately adjacent to the, excuse me, subject property also had a survey done that yielded the same results. The survey revealed that the rear property line was located three additional feet to the east, which provided a seven-foot rear yard setback from the ADU instead of four feet, which was what the approved plans reflected. Now that the precise location of the rear property line was confirmed, work on the foundation for the ADU and the attached one-car garage began. It wasn't until the, it wasn't until after the foundation was formed and poured and the framing was about completed that the city building inspector noticed that the one-car garage appeared to be less than a minimum 30-foot building setback from the front property line. It was at this point that the city building inspector issued a verbal stop-work notice to the project team to cease work on the one-car garage and that the work on the ADU could continue. Soon after this discovery, at a meeting with the project team, city engineering and planning staff visited the project site and confirmed that a portion of the one-car garage did in fact encroach into the front yard building setback area. Based on the county assessor's map, Rosenow Drive is a 50-foot wide public right-of-way. To determine the location of the front property line, city staff took measurements from the center line of Rose, Rosenow Drive for a distance of 18 feet to the east, which located the flow line of the rolled curb. Then from the flow line into the property line for a distance of seven feet to locate the front property line. Then from that point back for a distance of 30 feet, it was determined that a triangular portion of the one-car garage encroached 9 feet 6 inches into the front yard building setback as measured at its closest point. The total area of encroachment is approximately 130 square feet. That's a brief overview of what had taken place with this project that led up to the variance, to the front yard setback that's being requested. Public hearing notices were posted and mailed to the most current property owner within 300 feet radius of the property, 10 calendar days before this meeting. 300 feet radius of the property 10 calendar days before this meeting. In addition, the public hearing notice was published once in the Orange County Register. Personally, I have not received any comments or against the variance request. As part of the variance application package, the property owner provided five signed letters of support gathered from property owners who would be most impacted by the variance request. Subsequently, the property owner provided four additional signed letters of support. I'll read off the names and addresses who have submitted the letter. Fran Dunn, 18492, Rosenow Drive. Bob Gudjovol, 18541, Rosenow Drive. Emma Parek, excuse me if I pronounced it incorrectly, 18501, Rosenow Drive. Jack and Selena Wright, 18521, Rosenow Drive. I didn't get the first name, but the last name is Lucci at 18471, Rosenow Drive. Lou and Marina Ratcliffe at 18562, Rosenow Drive. Ann Brown at 18551, Rosenow Drive. Chris Corp at 18566, Rosenow Drive, or Circle, excuse me. Betty Dominguez at 18472, Rosenow Drive. That concludes my brief staff report, and I'll be glad to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Just for the record, we have two public speakers as well that have filled out forms.
Okay, council, do you have any questions of Ray?
I will, but I'd like to hear from the public first and/or the applicant.
Okay, can we hear the public comments first, please?
Yes, I believe it's Jack Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I live at 18521, which is directly across the street from Rick, which I'm basically most impacted by this. I've been a Villa Park resident for over 30 years, half of that time on Rosenow. I thought I was going to be the oldest guy here, but not quite. So, just for information purposes, I had my contractor's license at 19, putting myself through engineering school, so I'm very familiar with permitting and building. To the building part of this, the design is excellent, extremely extraordinary, actually, and it would be very difficult to tell that there was any addition made to the property at all. To the permit process, either some individual, some department, some group, or the city, or maybe portions that everybody is involved in, I believe there was an error made somewhere. And to the property, I believe variance should be allowed, and to the second part of that, to the city, I think it should be extremely investigated as to exactly how this happened so they can assure it won't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is David. I don't want to mispronounce it, so again, if you want to help me.
State your name, please.
My name is David Piscisna. I live 18542, oh, by the way, thank you for listening to me, madam, council members. I live right next door to Mr. Barnett's property. I believe I'm the one most impacted. I have pictures. Can I bring them to you?
Thank you.
It's understood that one of the reasons we're here tonight has been some gross miscalculations of the city-approved architectural plans by Mr. Barnett, and that he is asking for variance to build closer to the street than what the city normally allows. On February 8th of this year, Mr. Barnett came to my house and tells me he's going to build an ADU unit on his property. He brings me to his property, shows me the stakes in the ground in relation to the fence between our properties. By this time, he's already hired a surveyor that tells him that the fence built 50 years ago that we share is off by 30 inches. This being so, the surveyor must have surveyed the front yard, which he should have known the plans to build so close to the street was against the city guidelines, and yet he continues to build. The front is off by seven feet. Now I hear it's nine feet, and no one notices, but 30 inches is acknowledged. It is true, on March 30th, I did get my own surveyor out there to corroborate where the property line is. I do want to state that the Villa Park City Code 23-24.4 states the ADU units that owner occupancy is required. I am questioning whether Mr. Barnett will do that when the time comes, because he's already rented out his house for several years. It's also stated that new dwelling units shall not be located in any front, side, or rear yard, and this AD unit encompasses all three of those. Here's my problem over the years. I have found that when it's convenient for Mr. Barnett to break the rules or ask his neighbors to conform to his standards when it works for him. Dave, will you cut down your coral trees so I can have more solar power? I did that for him. Dave, will you cut down your 40-foot pine trees so I can have more solar power? I said no to that one. Dave, you're not using that corner of the property. Can I use it? So I let him move the fence in the corner of our properties up there so he could manage the landscaping to his benefit. The reason being, he could not tolerate the remodel of the old Boone House on Villa Drive. It did not conform to his approval, and it had windows where residents were able to look directly into his backyard, and he values his privacy. That gets me to picture number one. Picture number one was taken from my master bedroom window. It looks directly into both of my windows on that end of the house. Picture two shows what four feet really looks like. So in the future, if you guys don't understand what four feet is in the new guidelines by the state of California, there's what it is. Those standing poles in the fence line are, is the fence line, and the E nearly hangs over the fence. Pictures three and four show more of the nearness of the ADU to the existing walls. However, it's now convenient for Mr. Barnett to build virtually on top of the property line and invade my privacy with zero consideration for others because he had to for the sake of the city. He had to save the city. So that brings back me to the curbside boundary, allowing Mr. Barnett, allowing Mr. Barnett a variance so he can build whatever he feels will work for him that most other residents of Villa Park will never be allowed to do. Please show us that Mr. Barnett was, just because he was once the mayor, he will not receive special treatment or favoritism. It is also my understanding that the refusal of variance will be a major financial cost to the contractor, and I would feel very bad for him because he's been very helpful as a medium between myself and former friend, former friend and neighbor, Mr. Barnett. As a parting statement, when Mr. Barnett came to me, the last person, not the first, where I was impacted, I think one of the most, came to me to be aware of his intended project, and I was the one impacted. His quote was, "Dave, you're going to be so excited about this." Thank you for listening.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Just for clarification for my, for me, on picture number two, this one, if you, this picture?
Yes.
So is it my understanding that the tall poles are what the property line was back in the 1970s?
Correct.
But the red fencing is the new property line based on the survey?
I don't think, I think that's probably more than the 30 inches difference, but it's, it could be in there somewhere.
Okay, but you agree that this is no, the pole is no longer the property line?
I, I think that if you go to court over this one, you will find that something that's been in existence for 50 years grandfathered in and probably hold water.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, I, nor a judge, so I can't.
All right.
But the survey.
I'd be willing to do that, too, so, yeah. I think something that's been in existence for 50 years is going to probably stand where it's at.
But just for my record, so the survey that was done by the contractor and the survey that you.
Is 30 inches more over, yes.
Okay, so the two survey results are, agree?
Yep, yes.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Now, if you want to go further on that, part of his fence is over on my property, too, so.
Thank you.
It's always been overlooked on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, any other public comment?
No, there's not, just for.
Someone wants to comment about adverse possession here.
I believe we have someone in the back.
I think, Mayor, I think councilman asked me a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to comment on adverse possession or that property line in the 50-year period?
Yeah. Adverse possession is the doctrine of law in California where basically if you squat on someone else's property, you, you obtain ownership of that property. However, there are a number of requirements, one of which is that you have to pay taxes on that actual property if you're a person claiming right. And assuming that in this case, the taxes were paid per the APNs where the property line was supposed to be, I would not think adverse possession would apply. I don't know the facts, but that would be my guesstimate. And also, I was going to say, is there any way to show, because I saw Chad trying to look around the angle to see the pictures? Can, I mean, I'm tall, can I hold them up to the camera, or is there some way?
Yes, I was trying to get the pictures.
Did you go to the, did you go to the property, councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman? Mayor Pro Tem, did you go to the property?
I did.
Okay, so if you went to the property, there are the pictures of the property. I don't know if you can see, I don't know how to do this. How do we, tell you what, I'll screen, I'll take a picture on my phone, and I'll send it to you. How's that?
Perfect.
Yeah, send it to Robbie, too.
Okay, perfect. So if you have questions or comments, if anyone.
I do, but I think there's members of the public that wanted to comment. Did I see a hand with?
Come on up. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, please, and your address.
Frances Dunn at 18492, Rosenow Drive in Villa Park. And I'm Rick Barnett's neighbor on the other side, and I just can't believe that this gentleman said all of these things about Mr. Barnett. He's probably one of the best neighbors I've ever had. We've been there for over 20 years. He and his wife are just amazing people. They don't complain about anything. They're just wonderful neighbors, unlike some people. And I would like to say, I am a real estate agent, and regarding adverse possession, actually, just because you decide to build on somebody else's property doesn't mean you have the right to own that property. And if they don't object to it, actually, that doesn't give them the right to take over the property. So it's, it's done without, it's done without consent, because I had a situation with adverse possession.
That's true.
Yes, so he certainly can't take his property just because he built his fence and didn't put it in the right place. This gentleman that got up and complained has basically complained about everything. He complained when I walked down the street once because I was talking too loud. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Barnett and Bonnie are probably very, very nice, nice people. They would do anything for you, and to get up and say things that are untrue is upsetting to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have another public comment in the back. Please state your name and address. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Jane Corp. I live at 18566, Rosenow Circle. So I'm neighbors with both of the parties here that they're discussing. No complaints about either of them. I like them both. And simply put, I think we should just move forward with the variance and get the, a really nice property finished, instead of me driving by it every day and looking at construction that is not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are we ready? Do you want to hear from the, yep, all right. Please state your name for the record.
Scott Tedrow. I am a resident. I live at 9702 Center. I also own a property on Bryley Way where my father and uncle, who just passed, lived, unfortunately. My uncle died on Saturday. I am the construction owner. I'm doing the project for Mr. Barnett. First, I want to say thank you to the city. Working with the city, the planners, Ray, Bill, they're fantastic people. I've built several properties in Villa Park, and I'm a resident, and I love this city, and I would never do anything to mislead the city or create any kind of problem. So I apologize for the issue that we have here today. Nothing was done in any way on purpose or to try to get around the ordinances or be sneaky. I'm going to, I want to update the facts. So I work for Mr. Barnett. I like him. He's a good guy. I know Dave. I think he's a reasonable guy. I think we have a situation where two people aren't getting along over a construction project. Unfortunately, I've seen that happen a lot. Dave, thank you for your comments. I do think Dave's reasonable, but I think both of them are very passionate, and when they get together over this situation, it was uncomfortable. So I have a tried-and-true process that I like to follow, and I do want to correct Dave. We were already in the, we had already got the permit to do the demo, so we were preparing the property and getting ready. We'd already submitted all of the plans. I know that Mr. Barnett spent at least two months talking with Ray. He really wanted to make sure that the ADU looked like it had always been there and that it enhanced the neighborhood. He's got a very odd-shaped lot. It's very difficult to put an ADU on. We went with an attached ADU. I did bring a concept. This is what the project will look like when it's finished, so I'd like to bring it up and show you, and wherever I point it so that the other council members can see, that'd be great, so. This is what it'll look like when it's done. And I did it in brown here so you could see the addition. There's that.
So if you want to just turn around and stand right here?
Camera right there.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. So I do want to clarify, we had already begun the project, and we started working on it, and I got a call from Bill, and Bill said, hey, I'd like you to stop. As a courtesy, could you stop? We want you to get a rear variance, I mean, a rear survey. And I said, what's the problem? We're 50 inches from the existing fence that was there, which is the green post that you saw. He said, the neighbor behind is concerned that it's too close, and he's concerned it's going to impact him. He wants to make sure that we absolutely are following the correct information, and he's requesting a variance. Variances are, a variance, I'm sorry, a survey. Surveys, if you do a complete survey, it's about $15,000. To do the rear property line, it costs $3,800. We agreed in the spirit of making sure that there was no issue and making sure that the city was, was happy and that the neighbor was happy. So that's why we stopped. We got our surveyor. It took three weeks, so I had to stop my process, get the surveyor. He came out, did the survey, showed that from the front of the property, Dave would have, would have gained about a foot, and to the rear of the property, he lost between seven and eight feet. So it's an odd-shaped lot, and the house is kind of twisted on it. The plot map from the county is off, and so that cut right into both properties. Well, that created a very big firestorm and a lot of emotions, and Dave was concerned that possibly the surveyor was either a friend of Rick's or had some type of relationship to him, and so he required to get his own survey. That was two weeks later after we started work again. So now, five weeks delay, we have to stop, and we have to wait for Dave to get his own surveyor. That took approximately three more weeks. So now I'm eight, nine weeks into delays. I'm having to take other jobs and do other things because my crew was set. His surveyor came out and verified virtually the exact same lines. And I do want to add, our surveyor did some stakes and did some things which Dave removed, which I understand, he was very passionate about it. The two of them are oil and water. So we waited, his surveyor came out, he put all the flags that you see, which are the property line. So I want to say, most importantly, the project was built with the proper 48 inches or designed, and construction began with the proper four-foot setback from the, from Dave's property. With his required and demanded, not one, but two surveys, we gained an extra three and a half feet. So now it's seven and a half feet from the actual property line. In the process, he was angry, he chopped down a tree. I mean, there was a whole bunch of things that happened. I basically told them both that I was going to stop the project if they didn't stop, and I became the mediator between them. I found Dave to be very reasonable. I went up every time he called, every time he had a question, every time he needed something, I came up and dealt with him, and Rick and he have separated. I also have worked out with Rick that he is in agreement to leave, once the project is done, to leave the historic line there so that neither party needs to give or take any, any of the land, which I think is extremely. give or take any of the land, which I think is extremely fair, especially with what's happened with the argument. We're going to do our job if we get the variance. If we don't, we will, we will do whatever's necessary. But we plan on building a very nice product. I plan, I've got two or three other projects in Villa Park. I want to be here a long time. My request to the, to the council is please change the requirements that for any new projects with new construction or ADUs, that a full survey should be done, because we see a lot of, I'm seeing this a lot. There's a lot of, the county plots aren't always perfect. And I think it would help the builders, it would help the owners, and it would really help the city if surveys were required. And so that's all I have to say. I can answer any questions. That's about it.
Can I ask one quick question before? On this, the picture provided by, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I don't want to be informal.
Pusizna.
Pusizna, thank you. I too wouldn't want people looking down at me if I was Mr. Pusizna. What, if this goes through, what is your plan, or do you have a plan to kind of help soften the fact that these windows would be right?
Sure. First of all, the variance is on the front of the property, so it doesn't impact Dave at all. Second of all, there's bushes and trees there. And if, I'd need to look at the picture, but I believe you're referring, is that your master bedroom, which is the window directly down?
No, the master bedroom is the one towards the back. And then there's another bedroom up there in the front that's directly down. But they're both.
Okay, so the one directly down, I mean, quite frankly, to be honest with you, I think Mr. Barnett would have to get on his roof, and the window, the doors, the windows would have to be open for him to have any chance to see down there.
No, that's not true.
Well, it's my expert opinion. And if he wanted to see up into Rick, I don't see how it's possible, because you'd have to lay on the floor to try and, and see into his window.
Okay, gentlemen.
But the elevation.
Gentlemen.
So.
My question to you is just, yeah, she can come, I just, would there be some consideration for, for making sure that this is more blocked out?
So do you have another picture of his, because his window's down?
We don't have landscaping.
No, this is from the perspective.
We don't have landscaping. You can condition it. Mayor, I'd just like to remind you that we don't have design approval for landscaping requirements. So if that's an agreement that they would want to make, that's something they can do.
I'm trying to get at, is it something that you guys could discuss?
Mr. Rossini came up and reviewed the property, spent a couple hours. And I do want to say thank you very much. I found you to be extremely reasonable, very knowledgeable in construction. And I know you may or may not rule in our favor, but I do want to say that you took considerable time and walked the entire property, and I really appreciate that. A lot of respect. And I told Mr. Rossini, we would, I would at my expense, work with the city and work with Dave to create any landscaping, front, back, and side, that would enhance the property and make the city and the neighbors feel better. And I will, I will work in any way I can with Dave, and I'm sure Mr. Barnett will work with me to create as good environment as possible. I don't believe that Mr. Barnett would see down there. And the bedroom is on the front side of the house. So he would have to go into his kitchen, and the window is up high. So he'd have to get on the counter and look down. But I will work in any way at my expense to help make it look as good as possible.
Thank you. Okay, now, council has questions. Councilman Rossini, do you want to go first?
Sure. Actually, you know what? I'll defer to the, my colleagues on Zoom here. I guess I just have one question for them, is, did you all have a chance to physically walk the site, or did you just drive by? I've got a head nod from, of yes for Chad, or Mayor Potem Zimmerman.
I went up there, and I think this is a great project. I think it will enhance the neighborhood. I think, you know, get a lot out of it. I think it will upgrade things. I spoke to Mr. Barnett. Mr. Barnett is, I believe, planning on living in the ADU at some point, as soon as it's done. So I think, I think it'll be a nice addition. It really looks beautiful. I think it'll help.
Mayor Potem, did you have any comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Laura Torres?
Thank you. So let me, let me first thank Scott for your time the other day. We spent about hour and a half to two hours, I think it was, walking the project, discussing the Hatfields and McCoys, so to speak, and then the neighbor to the rear and that project a little bit, as well as another ADU that you've built within the city. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Barnett, Mayor Barnett, is building an ADU, something that obviously our friends in the state think is important. I have a different opinion of the site setback, what they want to do, but nonetheless, whatever the law is, we will follow. 2324 of our code, owner occupied, is that even still applicable?
Probably not under state law.
That's what I thought. Okay. And then adverse possession, unless, I don't pretend to be a legal scholar, but I certainly knew the law when it was suggested. I don't believe that's applicable in this situation, any way, shape, or form. Is it, in your opinion?
No, it's not.
Thank you. Moving on to a couple other issues. I understand Mr. Pusizna's, forgive me if I butchered that. I understand his position, and I would be very concerned if I was a neighbor, and I'm downhill, and there's a project that's being built uphill, and it's within four to seven feet of a property line. I would, I would want to work with that neighbor to have adequate screening. At the same time, I also understand Mr. Barnett's position, that as a homeowner, they have, he and his wife have a right to contract with Scott to develop that property, to the extent allowed under a code and under state law. So that issue between you two, I think that, I don't really have much further to add on that. But I think what we're here today about is a variance, and that pertains to the 130 square feet. I'm just reading off my notes here, forgive me. Have we approved a variance of, of nine feet from the front property line in the past that you recall? I don't recall in the only four years or so, four and a, four and a little bit more years on council. Kind of a big departure. Usually, it's a little, little less. I'm asking, Ray, do you have any recollection of that?
Ray, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, what was the question? I didn't hear it.
Have we approved as large of a variance request as this in depth from the front setback, nine feet or 130 square feet, in your experience?
I don't recall. I don't recall having to process the variance for that amount.
Okay. And Mr. Taren was unable to be here tonight? Steve?
Correct.
Okay. Akram, do you recall any variance being approved in such? Okay, thank you. Got a few other items here I want to go over. What is the average size of a single-car garage? Because this is stated as a single-car garage, the drawing certainly looks very much like a way oversized single-car garage. What is the average size? Ray?
The minimum, the minimum for a single-car garage is 10 feet by 20 feet inside clear.
Okay.
So the one-car garage that's being proposed is a bit larger than your normal one-car garage space.
Scott, what is the size of that garage opening? Do you recall? I have the plans here. I just don't have them off the top of my head.
Yeah, the garage opening is 16, is the opening. The inside dimension, I believe, is 22. And Mr. Barnett wanted extra storage space, so it is, it is an oversized garage. But I will say, the plans were submitted, went through plan check.
No argument here.
Followed the process.
No, no argument here. And looking through kind of this process, because I see a lot of fault. I see fault with the applicant. I see fault with the contractor. I've been lobbied by arguably friends of either the applicant or the contractor. I don't know. But I've had phone calls from members of this community that don't even live on the street, which I find to be kind of odd. But that's okay. That's okay. It just, it screamed influence to me, and I don't need influence to make a decision that does not pertain to all of Villa Park. So that, that was something that stuck out in my head. I violently agree with you. And as I, I think I even first mentioned that when I came to this job site, I said, we need to require surveys on anything that's built over 300 square feet, I think even before you said it. So I think good minds think alike. And I want to commend you on taking ownership of the mistake. I want to commend you on completing.
Did you get my email?
I did, and thank you. And I want to commend you on, I think, building what is arguably a nice project for the neighborhood, as is evidenced by the neighbors that have come out here. I'm obviously troubled by how this went down and why it went down and the mistakes that have happened. But I want to delve into a few more things here, if you'll indulge me. The architect, the project architect used the Orange County's Geographic Information System, or OCGIS. I'm familiar with it. I've used it a lot in my line of work, believe it or not. Is that typical for something when it approaches a property line to use that, Ray? OCGIS, is that typical for an architect to only use that as opposed to a survey?
Well, I use it to confirm what the property lines are, because it's based on recorded maps of subdivisions in the city. This, as far as the architect using it, I think it's pretty commonplace for the architect to use it as well.
Okay. I just know that when, the few houses that I've remodeled, one in particular quite large, we did not detrimentally rely upon somebody else's homework. We had our own survey. I think that is proven, obviously, wisdom in this particular situation. It didn't happen. Moving on, I want to talk about some comments here. In the staff report, it says, California Government Code Section 65906 establishes the authority of the city to grant variances to the development standards and provisions of the zoning ordinance in cases where, because of particular physical characteristics specifically applicable to the property, the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning district. If this is the case, why wasn't an ordinance, excuse me, why wasn't a variance requested from the get-go, if this is in fact true, and if this is in fact applicable? I think that's a rhetorical question. I don't think that's applicable. Moving on to the resolution. Okay, I have some issues with the resolution 2021-3518. In it, it says fact. This is page one, approximately four fifths of the way down, maybe the second to last paragraph, it states fact, fact. It says, one-car garage, that's actually an oversized garage, would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship. What is the practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship? That's a mistake by the contractor, and a mistake by the applicant, and a mistake by the city. I can't put my name to something that is frankly factually untrue, when it's purporting to be fact. I guess there's a question there. What is the practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship?
Who are you asking?
Whoever would like from staff to answer that question. Ray or Akram. Bill's not here.
I can, if you wish.
Please.
So variance law in California is a recognition that all properties have unique circumstances. And variances are part of an overall zoning framework in recognition of that fact. Because if you tried to put a cookie cutter template upon every property, you would be depriving certain property owners of uniquely configured lots of certain property rights. So that's why variance law is in the books, because cities are trying to avoid takings lawsuits.
Sure.
So state law requires that these certain findings of that government code section that you read, apply. So the rationale, and I talked to Ray about this, for the variance in this case, and you as the decision makers are going to have to decide whether those facts fit those rationales, is that you have a uniquely shaped lot here. I think it's a trapezoid, if I remember my fifth grade geometry.
More or less, yeah.
Upside-down trapezoid. And that pushes sort of things together and lines in certain angles, which if it were a normal-sized lot, you would be able to build certain things, but you can't on this lot because of the configuration of the lot. That is a prototypical example of when a variance is allowed, because you want to give properties who own, the property owners that have these type of lots, the same building rights as you do other property owners. So those facts, as outlined in here, you know, the terms, physical difficulty, practical hardship, are recognition of uniquely configured lots and allowing property owners to build on said lots. So in my experience, I've seen a lot of situations where, because of those physical characteristics, variances are granted. Sometimes, they're not even real property characteristics. Sometimes, they're regulatory characteristics that limit the development of certain property. So in my opinion, is there sufficient facts, if the council decides that there are, to grant a variance in this situation? I think the answer is yes. But I think it is also within the area that if you deem that these property characteristics are not significant enough, and this is not necessary, you could also vote no. I think either decision would be legal. It's really up to your discretion as to if you think those property characteristics require the special allowance, which is allowed in variance law. That's my take on it.
Thank you. I think you've given an excellent rendition of the law and left the details a little bit out. But I understand where you're going, and I appreciate your comments. The location and orientation of the existing residence and garage, none of that is being changed by this variance, correct? If I'm wrong, we're just, we have a triangle that is in, is out of bounds, basically.
Correct. And some of the factors that influenced where the ADU was put, it's attached to the house. So we were forced to build it in a certain configuration, at least the attached part of the main ADU. And I want to just say something for the record. You had stated that you felt that some people had maybe lobbied you, and some people had some comments. I want to make sure that I state, and it's a question to you, I believe, you know, you spent a lot of time with me. We went over everything. And I said that I respect your decision, whatever it may be.
You did.
You need to do what's best for the city.
Yeah.
And I support it. So whether you rule for or against, I just want to state for the record. I find you very professional. Think you're a credit to the, to being on the council. Two hours with me going over everything thoroughly, I appreciate it. And I want to make sure it's, it's a record that you don't feel in any way I was trying to sway you one way or the other.
I think you took ownership of the mistake. I think you explained what happened. I think you explained the Hatfield and McCoy situation. And I think you're a credit, generally speaking, to what you do. You made a mistake, so.
Thank you. Is it okay if I sit down?
By all means. I know you're not 100%. We've discussed that. By all means. There's been a debate and a discussion. This has gone on for a long time. I don't take this situation lightly. I hope that none of my other fellow council members, one of which can't even be here, because apparently today, we were, our city attorney was contacted by a third party. Do we, what third party was that? About a possible conflict?
Myself. I talked to Steve.
Okay, okay.
I was advised of a situation, and I advised the city attorney. We discussed, and we decided that it was appropriate to advise the council of what the law would be. He indicated himself the circumstances, how they would apply or not apply. So all we did, and the city attorney advised the councilmen of the potential laws that might, as it might apply.
No issues with what you've done or taught us done. Who contacted you, might I add, about the possible conflict? Was it, did it come from a council member or from somebody else?
I believe I've heard it from a number of sources.
Okay. All right. Well, I got to be honest with you. I really wanted to pour over this and delve into it, because I knew there was going to be accusations of the council treating former Mayor Barnett with undue influence because of his reputation within the community. It made me a little candidly, obviously, I shared some concern with you about being lobbied by somebody who does not even live on that street, but is friends with Rick, who's a member of a large volunteer organization within the community, of which are many of our council members are familiar with and even participate with. So I really wanted to do my due diligence. I, I'm going to let it go for now and give you an opportunity to speak on it if you so are so inclined.
Thank you. And I appreciate all your comments.
And I appreciate all your comments and the due diligence that you have taken as well. And I also walked the property, spent some time with Scott. I do want to say, the reason why we're here tonight, instead of this having been addressed last month, was my fault. I was ill and could not attend. So I apologize for the delay and hardship that may have caused the homeowner and neighbors and having to drive up and down the street. So I definitely wanted to get that off my chest. People get sick and that was the first meeting I had ever missed. So my apologies to all those involved. Going forward, this, this case situation troubles me in one aspect because, as has been pointed out by all parties, including our city staff, the contractor himself, the homeowner, our city council, somewhere something happened and the normal smooth process didn't happen, didn't occur. Is it because we didn't get a full survey of the lot? Is it because somebody might be a former councilperson? I, I don't know. I tend to believe the best of situations. And I kind of myself feel that this is, this is really truly an oversight by several different groups. The contractor, the homeowner, some part of the city. However, I don't focus on that. What I focus on is, once it was identified by our city inspector, my understanding is everything came to a halt. And there was now a process initiated to identify and get the proper documentation. It was brought to council. Again, my fault that it wasn't addressed last month. So for me, the intent was never to try and hide something, based on what I'm reading and based on whom I've spoken with. It was never to try and slide something through or oops, we're going to try and pass this without following the proper, you know, rules. I know there were plans that were drawn up, those plans were approved, there were permits that were applied for. And again, once it was identified that there was a problem, it was addressed. And to me, that speaks volumes. And again, the intent, aside from, I believe there's a total of, was it 10 letters of support? 10?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
Nine letters of support. We, you know, ADUs are very important right now, especially because of our housing element update and the draft element that we proposed. I know that the community recognizes our ability as homeowners to be able to control what goes on, but also to recognize that what we do impacts other neighbors. I like the idea of us, as a, as a community, being able to design our homes as we like. I know there's a lot of appreciation to the fact that this particular project, I've been told by several, will look like it was existing ever since the beginning. And to some, that's very, very important. To me, I don't live on that street. So to me, it's a beautiful project, but I have to take those into consideration as well. Everyone that I've spoken to has mentioned that this is going to look like it was always there and always existing. It's not going to look out of place. It's not going to have funny angles. And, and for those homeowners that live nearby, that is something that is very important because they have to look at it every day. And the whole process of a variance is to allow for some exceptions. And in my opinion, I believe this particular case, yes, there was something that went wrong or a process that wasn't 100% done correctly. I don't believe the homeowner in this case, his position as having been on council, had anything to do with this. I believe that, if I'm wrong, please correct me, that once it was identified by the contractor and the city staff, they went to the homeowner and the homeowner is the one that said, "Stop and let's get the variance." Is that correct?
Right. The city issued verbal stop and the, to the contractor and the homeowner agreed and chose to come forward with a variance. We talked about the options and he chose to come forward with a variance.
Okay. I have no further questions. I don't know if Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman or if councilperson Pitts.
Yeah, I would like to just, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
I, I just want to clarify that I agree with councilmember Rossini, that this is not something we should take lightly. I think that variances are something that are an exception to rules that are established and we want to keep in place. But I also, everything that you just said, Mayor Miles, was spot on. It really echoed with what I was thinking on this, that given all of the thought put into how the process was, was followed or not followed, and then what happened next, I think intent, and then the community buy-in for all, almost all of the neighbors around the area speaks volumes. I honestly, I don't think that your former status on the council should matter at all. And I really didn't play that, put that into consideration here. To me, it's all about what the community feels is an appropriate variance versus not. And in this case, it seems like the way that things were done, and again, I'm saying a lot of what you just said, that it really resonated. So I would just wanted to clarify that on my side.
Thank you. And I will say, I do agree with Councilman Rossini. I think the lobbying also was inappropriate. I did not feel that it was warranted to be contacted and, and the individual had nothing to do with the homeowner or the, or the address or the house. So if there is no further comments or questions, are we ready to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the variance as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
So for clarification, there are two resolutions. This would be the resolution that would approve the variance, that would be approved by the council today.
To approve the variance, I believe I said.
Yeah, to approve the variance. Okay, so call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes by a three-to-one vote with Councilman Colacott recused.
And can we make a note or pin this for something later that we really look at, as mentioned by the resident, what happened and why this kind of went south, if you will? And perhaps we need to make it standard practice procedures that we have a full survey?
Yes, thank you. Several months ago, when this issue started coming up, we issued a policy, we changed it so that full surveys are required. As indicated by Scott, that it does necessitate a significant expenditure by the part of a contractor, 15,000 versus 4,000. So you can see where contractors, I personally dealt with two contractors who objected. That being what it said, we've told them that we're going forward and that's the policy because we don't want to get into situation in the future.
I think that's good.
The situation was an anomaly and we certainly accept, accept our share of the blame in the process, but we are taking steps to try and eliminate that kind of thing in the future. So this is one of them where we require full surveys.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, one, one final comment.
Yes.
I think this whole process, we all learned a lot through this process. And I, and I hope through the, you know, look back and understand what took place, what transpired amongst all the players, that we can learn from this so that we don't have future incidents like this and cause issues and so forth going forward. So I look forward to the input from the city staff with regards to how we approach some of these things in the future. You know, surveys and all those things are included. So look forward to that and a recommendation going forward.
Thank you. All right, can we please, Councilman Colacott back? And after the consent calendar, I think we'll take a five-minute break after the consent calendar, because there's some residents here I think that are wanting to speak on that.
Also, can Ray go? Do we need Ray anymore? I think he needs to take.
Bye, Ray.
Steve?
Want to help bring it off?
Okay, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Unless otherwise specified in the request to remove an item from the consent calendar, all items removed shall be considered immediately following action on the remaining items of the consent calendar.
So I would like to, just real quickly, number nine, we're going to request it to be deleted simply because in researching the title on this, this is, comes up differently than we had originally thought it was, where it's not an easement, it's a owned in, indeed, I believe.
Owned in fee.
Owned in fee. So in essence, we have a different process to go through than we originally thought. So this was in doing our due diligence in this, we originally filed it to move forward with the specifications, but we have to follow a slightly different process. So we'll be re-agendizing this in, in September in a different format. But basically, so number nine will be deleted from the agenda today.
Okay, so anyone that's here to speak on that item, they are free to go?
There is no, there's no-
Casey with apologies.
Sorry.
You shouldn't have contacted, sorry.
Sorry.
Well, this, this would not affect his property.
Okay. Nonetheless, I think.
I think it wouldn't affect my current property, but it was looking at what-
No, your property, your property is already, it's, yours is already yours. So this would, this would not affect yours in any way. This is the property from the, going west on the, from the walkway.
Okay.
So this would not have any impact whatsoever.
So what about the, I was looking at from the walkway to the right to my current property.
That's already yours.
Yep.
That's already yours. I think we notified you of that.
Yeah, that was like, that was several months ago.
Several months, we tried. So that's why we didn't notify you about this item, because it didn't affect his property. So we didn't.
Okay, so-
It wasn't attempted to.
I know I've had, I've paid the property taxes on the side, but I didn't know that it went all the way to the walkway.
We can clarify what, what is. I'd be happy to do that. But I think several months ago, we, I think we communicated to you somehow, I remember doing it, but it, anyway, that property is already yours. So you're, you're paying taxes on it.
Lucky you.
But it was only to a certain point.
No, it's, it goes all, we, we've investigated it further.
It doesn't go all the way to the-
The walkway.
-path, the walkway. Right. Put it straight through the property.
Right.
And we're talking about the other one.
We're talking about the, from the walkway for west.
To the, to the left?
Right.
To the left of the walkway?
As you're walking north to the left.
Right.
We're not talking about anything on that side because there's a very small portion that would be.
Okay.
So apparently you're good, this is about your neighbor.
Yeah, this is, this is about your, the guy across the street.
So I was just looking from the walkway to my property.
We can share, we'll share the dimensions with you.
Akram, can you, can maybe you guys make an appointment to-
Yeah, well, let's just say, we'll share the dimensions with him, but, but that's a clarification, which you, you may not realize, it's a lot of yours already.
I know a large piece of it, so we'll clarify about that.
Yeah, we'll clarify with you.
Okay.
Thank you, Casey.
So there wasn't an attempt, it wasn't an attempt to slide you, I just want to make sure you knew, because we just didn't think it affected his property. So there would have been no reason to pull you in or even advise you.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Todd, did you have something to say?
Well, I was going to suggest to get a survey, but I want to withdraw that comment.
So anyway, with regards to the consent calendar, it would be items number-
Number nine is deleted.
Number nine, so it's number three through-
Too soon, Todd.
It is a little too soon.
On the consent calendar, 10 is a notice of completion, but it does impact that slurry seal project that I was, need to recuse myself on. Do I need to also recuse myself for the completion notice?
Generally, slurry seal is deemed maintenance and not new construction, so it's exempt from the real property interest, conflict of interest rules. But if you recused yourself last time and embuts a caution, I would do so for the record now as well. You can remain because it's on the consent calendar, so I would recommend you, you do recuse yourself.
I will recuse myself for item 10.
For item 10, okay. Does any council member want to poll any items? Okay, I would like to poll four and eight. So item number four, approval of the city council minutes. I was not present, so I don't want to even abstain. So if you could call the roll for item number four?
Well, why don't we just do the rest of the consent?
Do the rest, yeah.
Rest, and then-
Oh, okay.
Why don't we just make a motion that you approve with the exception of four?
Four and eight.
Eight and nine.
Four and eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to approve everything but four and eight?
Four, is it four, eight, nine then?
Yeah, nine's no longer on, so that's removed.
Nine's deleted.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
And then for the record, the mayor Pro Tem will be recusing himself from number 10.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion on that to approve the remainder.
Please call the roll.
No four, no eight, nine's gone, Chad recused on 10.
You got that?
Nice job.
Alyssa, she's recording the minutes, okay? All right, okay. All right, so Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes, and abstain.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Okay, now we will go back to item four.
Now, item four, yes. I, I-
I'll make a motion to approve four.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes four zero with Mayor Miles recusing herself. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and then item number eight, I pulled more of a reminder for the out-of-area travel authorization. So I know there was some confusion on that per diem, but we changed that. So I just wanted to remind, I don't know who's going yet or, we shall all safe travels, but just a reminder about, we changed that to 100 per day. So before the travel policy for meals listed that there was a specific dollar amount per meal, and we felt that that was kind of limiting, especially if you arrive on a Sunday and it's the middle of the afternoon. And so just a reminder to everyone that it's 100 per day for the meal expense. Please make sure you look at the policy that was sent out by Kim earlier today about what is approved to be reimbursed and what isn't. And along with, just a reminder to everyone, we changed the budget amount for the travel for each of us to a flat 2,000. So when you're making your plans for travel and hotel and the cost of the conference, please keep that in mind as well. So it was more of just a PSA reminder, and that was it. So other than that?
Motion and a second.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second, I'll second. You call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, I think we can take a five-minute restroom break, if that's okay, and we'll come back in 9:45. Take a break.
Number 10. Number 10 we need to vote on because-
No, he did.
No.
He recused himself.
He recused himself, but the rest, the record will reflect that he recused himself on number 10, but it was approved.
Of Akram. Five minutes.
Hey, you know what? Double-checking work is a good thing. Thank you.
Welcome back from our quick little break. I'd like to resume our council meeting. We're going to start with new business, NV5 engineering contract extension.
And Mayor, if I may, I must, myself, as I do have, actually have a business relationship with NV5.
Okay, will you repeat that again on, and push the mic? Thank you.
Okay. Again, I need to recuse myself because I actually do have a business relationship with NV5.
Thank you. We'll call you when we're done.
I'm going to page her.
Yeah. Can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is the NV5 engineering contract. This was on the agenda last, last meeting in July. At that time, you'll recall, there were not enough votes to approve it, so I was directed to go back and talk to them, et cetera, see if I could get an extension through August, and then moving forward from there. I went back, and one of the first things I did was call and said, would you be willing to provide services through August? And they agreed to do that. They were also concerned that if they did agree to do that, they also wanted to make sure that, you know, if we had a, if we were going to pull the plug, then let them know. And I said, well, what would you be willing to do for sort of a longer-term basis for us? They indicated to me that, and I said, I'm not going to pay an increase, and they said, well, we need an increase going forward, and they wanted to have an increase for years two and three. And I said, well, you know, look, I'm, I'm not willing to do as big an increase as you want. I did talk to them, and they said, well, how about three or five, three to five percent, somewhere in that range, for the first two, year after year? And I said, how about two and four, which gets you two, zero percent the first year, two percent the second, four percent the third year, which would get them to the three that they were looking for. Then what I subsequently did is I contacted some of the other cities, and talked to them about services and whatnot that they were paying. We, when you consider the, the rate that we're paying our current contractor, and I'm going to go off the top of my, I don't remember what the actual, 145 per hour, compared to what the base pay is for a city engineer in surrounding cities, we're getting a deal. And for us to move forward, there is, I, I did not believe it'd be very profitable to go out forward, because I think we're getting a good deal. So any other firm we would be looking at would probably be charging us much, much more. So, again, bringing somebody on staff would bring with it the accompanying benefits and the pension, which I was intent to avoid, and so going to another contract, I just didn't think that anyone's going to outbid a low bid anyway. So with that, I'm, I'm prepared to, and I think the best thing to do from a continuity perspective and from a financial perspective, is to move forward with a revised proposal, which would be a three-year proposal with maintaining services with NV5, in which we would have a zero percent increase, followed by a two percent increase in the subsequent year, in the third year, which would be a four percent. So I would recommend that for council approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council and staff? Two staff?
I have a question.
Yes, speak loud.
Thanks. So, I'm not troubled, but just concerned about your choice of words when you said they would probably be more expensive. Does that mean we don't actually have another real quote from anybody else on what this would be? Do we have no other exploration of an alternative? Is there nothing else that we have?
No, that's correct, we don't.
Yes.
But, Mayor Pro Temp, some of the other cities, when they're paying, when you figure the actual cost, they're paying over $200 per hour, or up with the benefits included, and there is highly unlikely that a contractor's going to come in and underbid what other cities are actually paying just for that. So, I mean, I didn't figure, it was real fruitful to go out and start looking when I know that we are getting an extremely good deal by comparison to, say, our neighbors in Orange and Anaheim and Tustin. So I just thought this is, this is, I just didn't feel that it was probably worth the effort to move forward when I thought we were going to get a deal. Obviously, if the council feels otherwise, that's my mission. But based on the information I was hearing, and when I actually talked to the HR manager in Anaheim, she asked how much we're paying, and I said, how much are you paying? And she started laughing, because she realized in benefits in total, they're paying pretty much twice what we're paying for the hourly rate. So assuming that a private contractor is going to be bidding under something like that is, is pretty hard to imagine.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Nope. I have a comment. I know that, again, this may not have been an issue had I been able to attend the last meeting, so I do apologize for those involved. This got delayed, and I know, Steve, you had conversations with the business owner of NV5, right?
Yes, I did.
And I just want to say thank you, because I know that, that we would have been left a month without any, any, any engineer to help our residents. So I appreciate that, for that month that we had to wait because of me, that you were able to negotiate that they stayed on for another month before this came back. So I appreciate that. So if there's no other comments, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Yeah, I'll second. Can you take the roll?
Okay. Councilman Pitts?
No.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a three-one vote, with Councilman Colacott recusing himself.
And before we call Councilman Colacott back in, can I go back and revisit, just to make sure that we're doing this right, for item number two? We approved the variance, but we didn't talk about the resolution, so is the rest...
I did, I mentioned that there would be approval of the resolution. If you recall, I said, the approval of the resolution that would authorize the variance.
The variance, okay, so that's, we're all good housekeeping-wise that way? I just want to make sure, so that way, there's no misunderstanding.
Right, no, that's...
We're good?
No, I mean, the entire...
Resolution was predicated on the acceptance of the variance.
There were two resolutions, and I said, I made a point of saying there are two resolutions. This would be to approve the resolution that approved the variance.
Okay, just want to make sure.
No, we're good.
Thank you, okay.
I will say, if I don't think we're good. Just so you know. I will say if something's wrong.
Oh, thank you, okay, yeah. I know, more for clarification for me, just to make sure I didn't miss something.
Nope.
Welcome back. Getting a lot of exercise?
You can sit at the table again, Akram.
Beer chloro.
Get some snacks.
Or go.
All right, moving on to number 12, appointment of city treasurer. And recommendation, city council adopt the attached resolution 2021-3523, appointing Bill Underwood as Villa Park City Treasurer, effective August 25, 2021, for a four-year term, ending August 20, 2025. Steve, will you please give the staff part?
Thank you. You recall that, I want to say about two years ago, John Bogart took over the treasurer, two to three years ago, and I don't remember exactly when, 2019, so two years ago. Anyway, he has sold his home and moved from Villa Park, and he basically resigned your attached, that's attached there. So we put out a recruitment, and we received two applications, one from Mr. Underwood, and who, and one from a Mr. Michael Rice. Based on the, looking at that, it's my recommendation, Bill Underwood, who is in the audience, has served the city a tremendously amount as the chair of the financial, of the Villa Park...
Investment advisory.
Investment advisory committee. And he has done a tremendous job in working with us and knows our system very well. He knows what we do, our investments, our strategies, et cetera. So with that in mind, now, now, Mr. Rice is also a very competent individual, very qualified, who's retired, and indicated he would very much like to participate in the city. So it is going to be my recommendation, after talking to him, that he takes a seat on the investment oversight committee. So we will swap Mr. Underwood out, because he loses, he becomes the no-longer voting member, and he would become treasurer, and then we would have somebody to be a voting member in his place. I still have to confirm that Mr. Rice is interested, but that's sort of the recommendation. We're very fortunate to have such highly qualified people in Villa Park. I know that several of you had a chance to sit in on the, the investment oversight committee and investment advisory committee, and it is, it is a very, very dedicated group of intelligent professionals, that I have to sit back and go back and listen to tapes sometimes and say, what did they say? Because I have to redo it. So we're very fortunate that Mr. Underwood is here, and I'm sure he would be more than glad to speak if you need to, but I'm, would like to also recommend it be a four-year term, whether or not he wants to stay in four years, that's certainly his choice, but I'd like to grab him for a while and not have a turnover after a couple of years, if possible. So you kind of hook him at the start and see how long they'll stay. So that's sort of my recommendation at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, would you like to say anything?
I have nothing to say.
Man of few...
His resume says it all.
Yeah, yes. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments?
I'd just comment that we are very fortunate to have Mr. Underwood. I can't see you in person, but thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you. I agree, I served on the investment advisory committee, and that, that group of individuals definitely worth their weight in gold, and they're all volunteering, so we're very fortunate to have them, and what the investment advisory council does for the council and for the, for the city, so. And, Mr. Underwood, it's always been a pleasure to, to serve with you, and I certainly hope that you have many, many years, should you be appointed as city treasurer. I think you're going to do a fantastic job, and your character and values are definitely one that warrants high recommendation of this position, and, and I wish you the best of luck.
You mentioned committee, I always like to talk about them, I think you may not know all the members of that sort of...
Step up.
I'm William Underwood, living at Colony Grove Lane. The committee now consists of a three-time mayor, Brad Reese, who's been on the committee quite a while, very confident individual. Also, it consists of a former minority leader of the Assembly, and, board, chairman of the Board of Supervisors for two terms, and, among other things, Bill Campbell. So that's, he's been a recent addition to a good committee. We also have the former Orange County Chief Financial Officer of the Year in Joe McCarthy. And then, seems like one I'm forgetting, oh yes, of course, our esteemed vice chair...
She better not know, she better not realize you missed her.
Forty years at, an economics professor at Chapman, and also has a, a member of her family who's a former president of Chapman College, university, Chapman College at the time, and then Chapman University. So there, we leave the committee in good shape in terms of leadership. Any one of those people could run that committee in a heartbeat. So I, we're proud that we built it up. We are a little short, we do have, if this individual would come on board, then I think we still have two openings. Some years ago, we expanded from five to seven. Plus, I'm, I'm probably done. I've put every idea into it, so I think I've been on it nine or 10 years, and five or six of those, I've been, six or seven, I've been chairman. So we need some new blood, so I'm also looking to put new people in the community onto it. Bill just came on recently, and he's great at answering questions and seeing things well, but, and that, so I recommend, the, the committee you have supporting you now is very strong, because we'll keep them around and add some new ones to it.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I would be honored to make the motion that Mr. Underwood is our next treasurer.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I was hoping someone was going to accept, so I could...
Yes, sir.
Yes, one other item I'd like to suggest, John Bogart was appointed a couple of years ago on relatively short notice, and he, from all reports, he did a great job. I'd like to suggest that we issue him a resolution of appreciation for his service.
Great. You're going to, you're going to like, at the end, the council member matters then, so, stay tuned. And hopefully, Mr. Rice accepts the appointment for joining the investment advisory. That's a great idea. Okay, item number 13 of new business, meal gap program funding. Steve, can you go ahead and give the staff report, please?
Thank you. The county of Orange, Supervisor Wagner in specific, advised us some time ago that they were going to give us, they gave us $10,000 originally, then they gave us another $19,000 for meal gaps. So what we did originally was, with the assistance of the Rotary, we had a meal program in, in Villa Park, but we found the need wasn't all that great, and, and it was difficult to get the volunteers. So we have $19,000 that we need to spend by December. So one of the discussions I had with, well, we, we had a number of suggestions, one, the first one that I was hoping would work out, is we would be able to fund the November Marine Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, the Marines are not allowed off-base, so the Marines can't come to Villa Park this year, so we weren't able to do that. So, that being said, that was sort of our initial hope. Then, in talking to, and I'll give Ed Carter credit, Ed said, why don't you look at something like meal emergency supply food kits? You can get them for probably around, you know, $50 a unit, 39, $40, you know, with taxes and everything, right around 50. And what that does is it provides 72 hours of food substance for one person, for basically 72 hours. That's typically what emergency kits should be, so that allows you, if, three days, they're hoping you get contacted by somebody at some point. So that's sort of the, the standard barometer, is 72 hours of basically, somebody needs to take care of himself. If you do the math, we can probably buy 400 of such, you know, plus or minus units of those. And what we can do is, we can give them to the Villa Park residents, first off, those who come in over, free of charge, but over 65 would be the first choice, because those are the ones that are least likely to have food substances and be able to run out to store, or go or evacuate, or whatever. So the, probably the ones most in need would be those over 65 who come in. So what we'd like to do is have authority to purchase emergency food supply kits, or use that $19,000 or $19,651 for that purpose. I think it's a very creative idea, it helps us do two things. One, it helps make sure that people have food if they need it, because you don't just have to use it in emergencies, somebody could use it in the event that they're sick and couldn't get out, or something, or something happens. Secondly, it could help us in an emergency situation where we do have occasionally, you know, we, a fire comes through, or something comes through, we have to evacuate, or, or we have some natural disaster that comes through. So in, in our disaster planning, and I know Councilman Rosini has said, let's do some more disaster planning, this sort of helps kickstart that, if you will, and helps us get some things out there. And, you know, getting families, and, and starting with people over 65 to begin with, getting 400 meals out for three days is a lot, and in, the county was very impressed with the idea, they liked it, so it qualifies for an eligible expense, which is pretty good to do. So with, with that, I'd recommend approval, and I can answer any questions.
How long do these kits last? What's the shelf life?
They're probably up to anywhere from two to five years, depending upon what you, what type you get.
Okay. If it turns out that we are, don't distribute enough our kits and have, you know, start, have a surplus, could we develop, or donate them to another community that is in need?
Sure, that's, that's absolutely no problem. But I, I suspect that the demand, candidly, if you tell people in Villa Park, you first come for serve and you can get them, I think we'll have a line at the door the day that we say that we're going to start giving them out. So I think, but, but obviously, we wouldn't want them to go to waste, so I think you're right, that's a good point.
Any others? No. I think it's a great, great idea, very creative, I appreciate your, your ingenuity in, in coming up with this, so. There's no public comment on this?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Real quick.
Ah, yes.
So are we going to be tracking who we're giving these to, and then trying to, to be able to document this back to the county, or is this a...
We have to document that we purchased them and who we purchased them from for the county's sake. What my second sort of intent to start with people over 65 is to sort of get something with information. We don't really have a good idea of is our population over 65. We don't have them identified in Villa Park. So if we have these people come in and self identify, we can create a list of people we know that might be at risk if something happens. So our goal is to start creating a list. And I know that we've talked, Mayor Miles and I've talked about, she's on the Senior Citizens Advisory. We've talked about, well, how do we get to the seniors? We don't even know where all the seniors are in Villa Park, but this gives us a start to how to get to them. So that's you've sort of tapped into the second sort of motive of doing it, starting with age 65 and above.
And just to be clear, like they can opt out to not say, yeah, I don't want you to maintain my information or?
Obviously, no question. No question.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other further questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move, make a motion.
Did somebody else say something?
Oh, I just moved it also, but feel free.
Okay, now we need a second.
Second.
Perfect. Take the roll, please.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Great. Okay, now on to item number 14, City Manager Report. Steve?
Okay, we have have a number of things before. First of all, there is a the spreadsheet updating all the projects is included. And I'm certainly able to answer questions. A couple of other issues, and I've shared this with you and for the general public, this is more just an informational. We have received a response from HCD regarding our proposed draft housing element. And in that response, what they basically said to us was they didn't say yes, they didn't say no. They said, give us more information. So in talking to our consultant, I think our intent is to come in September and ratify our housing element with the information being requested by the council, by the HCD. And I think our intent is to move forward and provide a final version to the state with the plan as approved previously in June by this or May by the city council, which would be the Smith Basin, the ADUs and the current property here. So just as a as a sort of informational type of thing, we are one of only three cities in the county that has heard from HCD regarding a draft element. In other words, nobody else has even submitted a draft at this point. So we are one of three Laguna and San Clemente being the other two. So I was asked to participate in a panel with the other city managers next week to give input on what our is what our plan is. We're very different than most cities, but that's a unique approach that we have. And I think I'm very proud that we're sort of leading the edge and we're going to meet our legal requirements. So there's a lot of credit to be due here. And I think the good news is for the residents that we were not told no and we weren't told yes, but I'm going to lean to that's that's a glass half full, if you will. I'm not that's not a glass half empty. It's a glass half full. We just have to figure out how to put some ice in it to make it full. Anyway, so with that being said, secondly, we've received guidelines with the $1.4 million we're going to get. We have as close to final guidelines as the federal government ever releases and they keep updating every couple of weeks. So but I have sent Todd and I have been looking at a number of options. It turns out that is a lot more restrictive than you would think it was led to believe. And it is according to my contacts in the county who are actually using it. It has a lot of reporting requirements that weren't really reported. So anyway, we have a lot of effort to do, but I think we're going to come forward. I have some ideas, so I'm hoping to come forward in September with some a plan or at least an idea that council can sort of pick from and what they want to do. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that you'll probably be reading out some cities are doing this and some cities are giving away, you know, monies to this, that or whatever. San Clemente has decided to build a whole new city council chamber so that they because they can't have meetings because right now it's too small. So, you know, there are lots of ideas and things out there and it's it's a little bit interesting to go through the process. So Todd and I have had some really interesting conversations about what's doing. And I think Todd can say is as you read it, it isn't as free and clear as one would have thought when you read the press clippings about how cities and everyone were getting it. The last thing I would leave you with is the county, the state auditor did a report of cities at risk, financial risk. And the city of Villa, there's 400 and some odd cities in Villa Park. And I think in the city of State of California and city of Villa Park is in the green category, which is very minimal, minimal risk. And we're at like 370 or 380, somewhere in that range of the 420 cities. So we're in very good position. The why we're not in 400 because I know that's what I'm going to say, why didn't we get the A plus? It's because what is the OPEB or our medical retiree element? And our liability is $200,000. So that's the extent of our debt liability, which we have a $1.9 million reserve. So it's not really much of a liability. We're in shape. So in talking to Jim Gorzo and I, we're going to be talking about coming forward next year with the budget as part of a way to help us improve that scenario. So our potential liability is less and we move up. Now, it only means something on paper because again, we have more than enough to meet our requirement upfront. But just as a from a standpoint is we are in very, very good position financially in the state of California by comparison to a number of other cities, some of which are like Anaheim are at high risk. So we're at we're at very good risk. And the only issue that we have is the OPEB issue for us. Everything else was was a real positive. So I want to leave you with that. The council's foresight and their ability to put money aside and hold a reserve and stay steady with their but within live within their means has been a very valuable asset for us. And I think that was one of the elements in the strategic plan. For those of you here that at the time, we talked about maintaining a good financial position and being in an auditable shape at some point. So we pretty much have gotten the reading and we have done very well. So I just want to leave that with you. And that's all I have today. If there's any other questions or comments, I'm glad.
Comments or questions? So you might have said this, Steve, but so for the next step in the housing element, we're going to have another public hearing?
I think we're required to have a public hearing to adopt. We have to go through a public adoption process. And so we have to approve it and certify it at the city level and then submit it to the state. That doesn't mean the state may fully agree with it at the time, but we will have met our legal obligations. And I think we're we're at a point where there's no reason to believe we don't. We shouldn't be moving forward in the direction we're going right now. That's sort of the message that I got.
Okay, so if I'm allowed, am I allowed to talk about this right now?
Oh, yeah, no, you're just asking questions about his report.
I'll make sure because it's not on the agenda. So as long as we adopt and approve at the city level by October 15th, whether or not the state?
We will have met our legal requirement.
Our legal requirement. Okay.
Yeah, so certification is just an extra protection afforded us if HCD deigns to bless our element. I mean, we still have now an approved housing element. We just don't have the protection of certification, which if it were to go to court, would be presumed to be valid. We would have to prove it's valid if we got challenged.
But again, it doesn't mean discussions with HCD are over because we want them to certify it. But at the same time, we are not at risk for missing the legal deadline and having them take over our, you know, having the penalties associated therein.
That's yeah, that's what my concern is and the fines and whatnot. So, you know, all along, we've we've wanted to make sure we avoid that.
Right on schedule.
Okay, perfect. That's it. That's all for me. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Well, thank you very much. Moving on to mayor and council member matters, individual council member information items and or required meeting attendance reports. I'll start with Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Sure.
So I'm going to be brief. It's late, but so I'm gonna go fast. But we met on August 19th, 2021. And one of the things, if you remember several months back, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control was looking to move into another location because they've simply outgrown the Haster Building. And there was some considerable discussions, movement, negotiations on a building that was located on Dyer. That fell through for numerous reasons, which I was not disappointed that it fell through. So the discussion now, and I'm on the Budget and Finance Committee and it is a discussion for the whole entire board, is we are going to kind of just slow down, take a step back. We did go back and revisit why not remodel the current existing location. And it was and it was deemed that it would be actually more expensive than buying a building that was already preexisting. And everyone kind of decided that there really is no rush to do this. So either we wait till prices come down and or we wait until a building that really actually fits us and the needs. So we just have to be a little bit more patient. So that's been tabled, I guess, is a polite way of saying that. And then as far as our vectors, good news, bad news. Good news is Orange County does not have any cases of human West Nile virus, which is actually really good. However, there are 15 West Nile virus human cases throughout the state of California in nine different counties. But again, Orange County is not one of them. But it doesn't mean it won't get here because there are counties all around us that do have it. So definitely need to be very cognizant of all the mosquitoes. There are 1,000 West Nile virus positive mosquitoes, which is not the same as the human cases. Four West Nile virus positive mosquitoes, three in Fullerton, one in Anaheim. Laguna Beach is the only city out of 34 without the invasive 80s mosquitoes at all.
Move them there tomorrow.
Which is weird. So it's obviously got to be something like the salty air. Yeah, so.
Ankle biters.
The ankle biters, the black and white. Yeah, the black and white ones. So West Nile virus activity in California counties 2021 to date, 15 human cases. Again, none in Orange County, 121 dead birds. There's been 985 mosquito samples, chickens actually can get West Nile virus and two horses. So main thing is just make sure that you tip toss, take action. Also, with that sterile insect technique, I'm not going to revisit it again, but there is a whole bunch of slides. Chad, I'm happy to send them to you because I know we had a big discussion last time. There are three different methods. Main thing is they're all very expensive. The vector control is starting discussions on which one we think is going to be best suited for Orange County. However, whichever one we choose, we also have to have the discussion of a possible assessment district made for it and or increasing the current fees in the current assessment district. So it's a really big deal. But these techniques are proven to be very effective and we really need to get a hold on that. So that's it for the mosquito vector control. I'll take any questions if there are any. Seeing none, let's move on to sanitation.
So we met last month in July. We had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on for OC Sand. The one first one was about some restructuring of debt that took place. What happened was is there was about $134 million worth of debt that OC Sand decided to restructure by selling bonds. They expected to net about $7 million on this restructure. But given the AAA rating that they have received by rating agencies, they were able to sit net about $7.5 million. And OC Sand is the only California utility that has that AAA rating from all three major rating agencies. So I thought that was really encouraging. The other thing that we talked about, we spent a bunch of time time about there was a 10 minute video that was put out about the groundwater replenishment system, construction, the expansion that they're doing there, which is going to be one of the world's largest water purification system for indirect quotable reefs. They're going from about 100 to 130 million gallons per day, which is enough water for 1 million people living in Orange County. There is a video that's available on YouTube. If you guys want to see that, it's about 10 minutes. It's fairly interesting. And I can send that link out. We can probably put that in the feeder. And then I think I mentioned every month, there are other construction projects. And I just wanted to at least highlight there's Anaheim, Fullerton, Seal Beach, Westminster. There are projects that are under continual maintenance where they're seeing areas that need to be improved and working on them. And I think I typically only try to mention the ones that are directly impacting Villa Park. But just wanted to highlight there are obviously still existing construction maintenance projects that are ongoing. That's my rule.
Any questions? Nope, thank you. Moving on to Orange County Fire Authority.
No meeting this month. We are dark.
Orange County Library Advisory Board?
No meeting this month.
City Schools Advisory?
And we will have a meeting coming up shortly on that. You know, with everybody back in school, there's some stuff to talk about.
Perfect. Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting.
Villa Park Community Services Foundation. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. There have been a couple of events over the course of the last month. July 23rd, there was a concert in the park. A lot of good attendance and the music was fun. They had the Beatles music. The foundation continues to provide support to the community in terms of fun events that we have. And we have some plan coming up that we'll talk about in a minute. I attended National Night Out as well. That was a great event. I do want to compliment several of the Women's League who fixed dinner that night for everybody. Got to make sure I don't leave anyone out because that would not be a good thing for me to do that. So it's Carolyn Riker, Diana Fasenelli, Betsy Little, Marie Stubber, Kathy Curtis, Barbara Brockmire, and of course, my wife. They all prepared home cooked food and had it there for all the deputies and the volunteers and so forth that came. And I think everybody had a good, good night. I think the two, Captain Rich got a text from our current captain about some yellow squares that he loves to eat. And I think he ate a whole bunch of them. So both of them really enjoyed battering back and forth and having texts about how good they were. So and that he was sorely missed. But the one thing I want to bring up about the foundation, I encourage all of you to go out and take a look at the website. They've done over the course, I think of the last 12 months, they've done a lot of work on the website to bring information to the community, to publish the events that we have and obviously to put up a whole bunch of photographs that have been taken during all the events and the fun events that we've taken. So encourage all of you to go to Villa Park Community Services Foundation.org and take a look at that. I really appreciate all the hard work that the entire foundation board has put into the website and really do appreciate all the support they give to the community. So and we have Halloween Fest coming up next, so look forward to that. There are already planning it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Can you confirm Halloween Fest? So I know years ago, it was always the night before Halloween. And then when our Shamim and her husband ran it, they always kept it on the Saturday before Halloween. Well, this year, both of those apply. The 30th is the Saturday before Halloween. Is that going to be Halloween Fest?
I don't know that they've firmed up the final date yet. I know that there was a third conflict, but I don't know what that was. But as soon as we know, we'll get the information out to the community, one through the website and also I'll bring it up in council too as well.
And then do we have a?
We'll put it on the feeder too.
Do we have a date for the boat parade, for Santa tour and boat parade?
Not yet.
Do we know if they're going to be on the same day or are they going to be broken up again?
Don't know. I don't. I'm not sure who's planning it right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? No meeting for Housing Legislative Committee, Bridges at Kramer Place. There was no, there was no meeting. And finally, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, that was me. We met August 13th and along with the scams that Captain Newsom was talking about and our fearless leaders of the Neighborhood Watch, we had a special meeting of the different scams that are going on, especially with our seniors in our Health and Wellbeing Reimagined, which is a subcommittee of the Senior Citizens Advisory Council. And so I'll send these slides to Steve and maybe we can put the link on the feeder. But the top scams, and I just want to briefly go over it applies to everyone. And I know for our family, my mother in law, who's no longer with us, but this was probably six months ago, had one of these. The first one, the most prevalent one right now is the impersonation of a loved one. So grandparents get called by someone that sounds and is exactly the voice of that granddaughter, grandson, grand whatever. They know too much information about him. They give the scenario, the young voice tells that, you know, oh, my gosh, I'm on my way to a baseball game with my friends from high school and we got in an accident and I need money. And unfortunately, a lot of the, you know, elderly grandparents are falling for this. And then they just have to go down and get a credit, get a target card or a Visa card and pardon?
Green dot. It's usually a gift card.
Gift card, right. So this happened to my mother in law and she literally almost had a heart attack because this child was screaming in the background and portrayed it to be my son. And she knew that he often travels with his team on tournaments. And so the scenarios fit perfectly and it was just horrible. And that is the top scam. So they recommend to please, you know, before you go and buy that that card, try and get ahold of the parents or somebody that would know exactly where that child is. Online shopping, extortion or blackmail, phishing or verification emails. And I'll give example of these, online, online quiz and games. So we all like to, you know, play our games or whatever. And sometimes something will pop up and it'll, it's not really the online game that you think it is or a quiz like it'll ask you. And one of the things that they say is some of these will ask you questions like, you know, did you grow up in Orange County or did you, these very defining questions that will help these people based on all the other information they gather about you, figure out your passwords. Because you'll sign up and say what your four children's names are or what your favorite dog was. And there's these algorithms that they can plug these in and the probability that your password is going to match this. So I'm sure Chad, you probably are familiar with this. Survey emails and then tech support. So one of the ones that is, I didn't even know, was when you go to a site, if it has the HTTPS, it's safe because the S stands for safe. That's it's versus just HTTP. So if you have a link in an email that you were sent from somebody and says, click here, when you hover your mouse over it and if you look at it, it to know that it's safe and it's not going to take you to some other location where they're collecting these information from you, it has to be HTTPS. So don't ever click on it if it's not an S. I did not know that. And also, when you get these emails, it might be. you get these emails, it might be like, oh, your Amazon account's been hacked. And they have a link in there. When you hover your mouse over it, a couple of seconds later, it will pop up the actual location that it's going to take you if you click on it. And it, let me see what it'll say. When you hover over the link, it will, it will reveal that the name of whatever organization sent you that is not in the name when you hover the mouse over the link. So it will, like if it was Amazon and it, Amazon sends you, hey, we found fraud on your account, click here. You know, hey, Mr. So-and-so, we noticed you placed an order just two days ago. Like, oh, wow, I did. We've got fraud on this account. Click the link below and, you know, we'll help you solve this. And so as soon as you hover your mouse over that, if it doesn't say HTTPS and Amazon, don't click on it because it will take you to some other place. And usually it'll say something like HTTP and then redirect and some other name. So teaching our grandparents, even for us, like I said, I didn't know that, about that S with the HTTP and making sure when they hover the mouse is really important about getting these, our communities educated about all the different kinds of scams and whatnot. So I sent these to, I'm the designated representative for the senior centers in, in Orange. So they got a copy of this. We'll put it on our website and anybody that wants a copy, I can send to you as well. So it was very informative. So that's it for the council member reports, the attendance reports. Do you have any questions? Okay, so how about Councilmember Matters? Let's go ahead and start with Councilman Colacott.
Let's see, a couple of things. I guess I don't have a formal report, but I did also attended the concert that we had at the high school a couple of weeks back. But in addition, I've been attending the Hart Park concerts held by the City of Orange, which are also quite good. The last, I attended the last one and it was, the, featured a Latin band called Soto, excellent. But prior to the concert, Mayor Murphy of the City of Orange came over to me and invited me to lead the crowd in the Pledge of Allegiance. It was a totally packed crowd. So this was quite an honor. And he recognized me as a councilman of Villa Park and a past mayor. And anyway, I was quite, quite proud to represent the city. And it was quite an honor that Mayor Murphy offered me that opportunity. Also, I'd like to, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I'd like to suggest that we recognize the efforts of, the contributions by John Bogart as treasurer. John was appointed treasurer on relatively short notice a couple of years ago. From all reports, he did an outstanding job. And I think it would be appropriate for us to recognize him, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Pitts?
I'm good.
Councilman Rossini?
School's back in session. Drive safe.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Nothing else for me. Thank you.
I have a few things, as I'm sure you all guessed. Not surprised, right? Wanted to thank the sheriff and, and Women's League for the National Night Out I attended. And I thought it was great, very well received by our community. I would like to remind residents and, and get the word out, there were, we have no contract work on Sundays. And it seems like there are several construction areas, tree trimming, that people are not abiding by the no contract work on Sundays. And I would like help from the fellow council members. If you see it, to please stop. It's not fair for all those contractors and tree trimmers that aren't doing it. Not that it bothers me so much, but more it's either follow the rules or don't follow the rules. So I, I, not on purpose, was around the city several different locations. And there were several examples of where Sunday, there was contract work going on throughout the city. So I'd, I'd like to make sure we, we publish that and remind our contractors. Be mindful of school and the traffic. And I think that the city is doing a great job. We've done a lot of working together with the residents along the school areas, our sheriff. And I think our city staff has done an excellent job with communicating and coming up with a plan to help keep our residents and our children safe. And along the lines of recognizing Mr. Bogart, I would like to resume the tradition, practice of distinguished citizen, but include not only distinguished citizens or who we deem as a distinguished citizen, but also maybe former mayors and vets in our city. I know that we had to stop that due to COVID. I would like to resume that and bring that back to the council. And if you guys would indulge me and maybe give some ideas as to, is this something that we do every month? Is it something we do every quarter? But I definitely would like to establish something going forward that we resume the practice of recognizing a distinguished individual, albeit in the scope of a vet, a former mayor, someone who volunteered, you know, relatively quickly and, you know, did a great job, et cetera, et cetera. So if you wouldn't mind putting together some ideas or elaborating on this idea and just send it to Steve, that would be great. So that's it. So other than that, 8:34, 9:34, 9:34, I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.